We're going to go ahead and get started, folks. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Soto Longo, Dave Rosacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fangslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have been already heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, we will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on the consent. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, on the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department, so they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board, as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. There are no changes to the consent agenda. I'm kind of nursing my voice back from a cold. I've asked Vice Chair Dave Rosacker if he would read all the consent cases, so we'll get started with those.
Do you want me to take the motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right. Kevin. Thank you, Chairman. As Greg indicated, the, if we, as we read through these, if there's a case that you'd like to have testimony on, you need to request that we remove it from the consent agenda, and we will do so, and then handle it in the concert or the sequence of the rest of the cases. Okay, from the consent for approval will be read first. First item, Agenda Number One, Case Number C-12-24-46, applicant Patrick Ackerman. It's on consent for approval. The request preliminary and final plat approval of North Omaha Airport, a minor plat outside city limits, with approval of a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks and Section 53911 street trees, which was laid over from the February meeting. Location is northwest of Seventy Second Street and Bennington Road. Anyone want to see this removed? Okay, number one will be removed, and it'll be heard in its normal sequence. Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-3-24-76, applicant Falcone Land Development LLC. It's on consent for approval. Request: Approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from industrial to low-density residential. Location: Northwest of 209th and Blondo Streets. Anyone wish to see this removed?
Okay, number four will also be removed.
So we'll also take off number thirteen.
Yes, thirteen goes with it. All right. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-3-24-89, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, on consent for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location is 2613 Grant Street, 2617 Grant Street, 2601 Grant Street, 2616 Burdette Street, 2210 North 26th Street, and 2214 North 26th Street. Anyone wishing to see this removed? Okay.
We'll discuss it here shortly.
We'll discuss it later. So, thank you, sir. We'll take number seven off the consent. All right. Item Number Eight, Case C-12-24-63, applicant Omaha Housing Authority. It's on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of South Side Terrace Two, a minor plat inside city limits. Location: Northwest of 30th and W Streets. Anyone?
Northeast.
Oh, I'm sorry, northeast of 30th and W Streets. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Number Nine, Case C-10-24-64, Case, or excuse me, Case C-12-24-65, applicant Aaron Sinclair, on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Sinclair Edition, a minor plat outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG to DR, along with approval of a waiver to Sections 5399 sidewalks, and the location is south of 230th Street and Edgewater Road. Parcel Number 011591004. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Ten, Case C-10-12-179, C-10-24-70, and C-12-24-71, applicant University of Nebraska Board of Regents, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Saddle Creek Campus, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from GI, GO, GC, and CC to TOD 1 MX, TOD 2 MX, and CC, along with the repeal of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. Location is southwest of Farnham Street and Saddle Creek Road. Anyone wish to see this removed from consent? Seeing none? Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-24-72, C-12-24-73, applicant Jason Perry and Alyssa Perry, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Stratford Park Replat Two, a minor plat outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG and R4 to R4. The location is southwest of Rachel Snowden Parkway and 173rd Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Twelve, Case C-10-24-62, C-12-24-75, applicant Mohammed Haik, on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Camelot Village Two Replat Two, a minor plat inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Sections 5384D Lot Frontage, along with expansion of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District for a portion of the site. Location is northwest of 90th and Grant Streets. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none? Item Thirteen. We took off of consent, so it'll be heard in its normal order. Item Fourteen, Case C-12-24-80, applicant McNeil Company Builders, on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Four Seasons Linden Estates Replat Two, a minor plat inside city limits. Portions of the property are located in a cluster subdivision. The location is southeast of 143rd Court and Coming Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none? Item Number Fifteen, Case C-12-24-83, Foundations Development LLC is the applicant, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of the Iron Ridge Replat Two, a minor plat inside city limits. The location is 12805 Fort Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Seeing none? Item Sixteen, Case C-10-24-59, applicant PH Development LLC, on consent for approval. Request: Res zoning from CC to R8. The location is 7270 Cedar Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Seventeen, Case C-10-66-75, C-10-24-69, applicant Jerry Cavan, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R6 to R7, along with approval of a major amendment to the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District. The location is 3002 Paddock Road. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Eighteen, Case C-10-24-81, applicant Steve Gin, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from AG to R4. The location's 3108, or excuse me, 3804, sorry, 13804 Fort Street. Anyone wish to see this one removed? Seeing none? Item Nineteen, Case C-10-24-85, C-10-24-86, applicant Creighton University, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from GO and GI to DS, along with expansion of the ACI area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Southwest of 24th and Coming Streets. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Twenty, Case C-11-13-177, applicant Jack Schrager, on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District. Location: 19050 Jackson Court. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Twenty One, Case C-10-24-84, applicant Thompson Dresen Dornor Inc., on consent for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Northwest of Parker Street and Military Avenue. Anyone wishing to see that removed? Seeing none? Item Twenty Four, Case C-8-24-67, applicant David Rowe, on consent for approval. Request is approval of a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District. The location is 20109 Franklin Circle. Anyone wish to see this one removed? Seeing none? Item Twenty Six, Case C-8-24-82, applicant Alice Baker, on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in the R535 District. Location is 2722 North 30th Street. Anyone wishing to see this case removed?
Do you second Dave?
What?
Twenty-five's not on consent.
Yeah, it'll be here later.
Okay.
Okay, so anyone wanting to see twenty-six removed? Seeing none? Case, or item number twenty-seven, Case C-7-18-69, applicant Brownell Talbot School, on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in an R3 District, along with approval of a waiver to Section 55-166 Height to allow a forty-five-foot-tall building addition. Location is 400 North Happy Hollow Boulevard. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Thirty, Case C-14-24-87, applicant Property Owner, on consent for approval. Request, excuse me, approval of the vacation of the east-west alley from Eleventh Street to Twelfth Street between Isard Street and Nicholas Street. Anyone wishing to see this case removed? Seeing none? Item Thirty-One, Case C-14-24-53, applicant Douglas County, on consent for approval. Request: Approval of the vacation of a portion of Curtis Avenue west of Riverside Drive, approximately two-hundred-and-thirteen feet. Anyone wishing to see this removed? Seeing none? I'll read the layovers as well.
Yep.
Okay. Item Number Twenty Two, Case C-8-24-60, and C-7-24-61, applicant Open Door Mission, on consent for layover. Request: Approval of a large project special use permit to allow development over ten acres in the GI District, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow a non-commercial day shelter in the GI District. The location is southeast of 20th and East Locust Streets. Anyone wishing to see this removed? Seeing none? Item Twenty Three, Case C-8-24-66, applicant Tommy Look Carbo, on consent for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the GI District. The location is 13435 A Street. Anyone wish to see this case removed? Sir? Okay, number twenty-three will be heard in its normal order. And the last layover case is item twenty-nine, Case C-7-24-74, applicant Steve Fowler, on consent for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in the CC District. MCC overlay pending. Location: Southeast of 204th Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wishing to see this removed from consent? Okay. All right, so number twenty-nine will be heard in its normal order. Okay, that being all the consent, I'll turn it back over to the Chairman.
All right, thank you, Dave. We're going to take a motion on those that consent cases that were on for approval. If it was on for approval and left on there, no further action will be taken today, and it'll go through on approval. So, do we have a motion from the Board? Are those cases on consent for?
Motion for the approval of Cases Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-one, Twenty-four, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, Thirty, and Thirty-one.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
You didn't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, the cases that were left on consent for layover, do we have a motion?
Motion to layover agenda, item number twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
So, point of clarification, we will hear those cases that were taken off consent at this time in the order that they were read. So, number one, and then four and thirteen accordingly.
Yep. If you were here for any of those cases that were left on consent, no further action will be taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. It's up to you, so. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Okay, consent case number one, Case C-12-24-46, applicant Patrick Ackerman, request preliminary and final plat approval of North Omaha Airport, a minor plat outside city limits, with approval of a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks and Section 53911 street trees, laid over from our February meeting. Location: Northwest of Seventy Second Street and Bennington Road. Is Patrick here?
Trevor Vescrana with T210836 Old Mill Road, here representing the applicant Patrick Ackerman for the North Omaha Airport Prelim and Final Plat. We were here at the December Planning Board meeting for the special use permit for the onsite improvements. One of the conditions of that approval was to replat the existing outlots on the property. So, this replat will combine those two north outlots and the runway lot into one property. We're also seeking waivers to the sidewalk and street tree requirements. There aren't any sidewalks currently in the area. And then the street trees would be, they would need to be planted within the runway arrival and departure zones, so we'd be seeking a waiver for that. There was an initial comment from city staff to provide additional post-construction stormwater information. We've submitted that updated drainage study and have coordinated with the county and NDOT on the basin location. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? We'll need your name and address, please.
Good afternoon again. I'm Kathy Lanfair, 7030 Bennington Road, back here. I'd like to initially just state some general safety language that I'm going to reference regarding sidewalks. Chapter fifty-three subdivision regulations pertain to best engineering practices for construction and maintenance and/or pedestrian and driver's safety. While waivers can and have been granted, the city has balanced the waivers with an eye for public safety. For example, the mill at Timber Creek, Alloys Acres, Ponca Hills, were granted one or two waivers because public safety had been sufficiently addressed by compliance with other regulations. If there are no sidewalks on the North Omaha Airport, my question is to you, from one side to the other, from the east to the west with the runway in the middle, and either side having venues, how is one to get from the east to the west, the west to the east? Are they crossing the runway? Is that how they're going to go if there's no sidewalks? Human nature tends to lead us to the easiest path, and that's the runway. The Ponca Special Development Zone's performance standard objectives and the urban development element of the master plan specifically require that construction activities and design solutions result in safe, cost-efficient improvements, providing an adequate level of protection for the general public. Can I ask for each of you to respond at some point to any of us, how this has been addressed for a safety issue, if it even has, or if it has just passed? Trees. We would like to know, since we live around the airport, what are they speaking of trees today on the agenda? Is it the fact that the applicant does no longer want to put trees around the airport? Were those trees supposed to be buffers to the people who live around for noise reduction? Why was it initially added? Why is it additionally taken away? We can't respond because we don't know. We don't have any of that information. If the DR wants to be changed to AV today, why change to AV when the FAA, once again, and Nebraska Department of Transportation and Aeronautics will not endorse the airport for safety? There are too many violations. Once again, in front of you, I am saying, we are proponents of the North Omaha Airport. We want to see it succeed, however, not at the lack of safety that is, that is being misaddressed here. In respect to the Zoning Board of Appeals, when my husband was speaking, there's a gentleman on the Zoning Board of Appeals who's also a pilot. He responded to my husband, "Well, of course, it's going to be safe. The FAA would never allow something to be not safe." However, if I must point out once again, and will continue to point out, the FAA and Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics will not look at this airport. It is done. It is over. It is a private-use airport because they will not adhere to safety regulations. The trees have been there for a hundred years. They are not the safety problems. We have safety-deficient runway, that is forty feet. The FAA says a minimum of sixty. We have at least five homes that were built in violation during the last ten years. Those are all safety hazards. You can't just stick a light on top of the house and say, "Poof, it's fixed. I now am not going to run into the home." No, it's just one more distraction. Until we all understand that safety is the first rule and appreciate the fact that the tax-paying citizens around the airport are all in harm's way because there is no safety regulations available at the airport. Is the city going to take the responsibility since the FAA and the NDOTA won't? That's my question that I seem to not be able to get answered. So, again, why change from DR to AV? I don't have the answer. I keep asking for one, but I never receive one. Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Yes. Gentlemen, I want to address a problem that's been said.
We need your name and address, please.
Okay, I thought you guys already knew who I was by the time I've been up here so many times. Dan Lanfair, 7030 Bennington Road. You know, we're not against the airport being there. We bought next to the airport for the intent of possibly using it someday. But afterwards, this gentleman bought it with a different intent. It was a public-use airport. When we moved there, we thought it would be completed that way and remain that way. I've been questioned many times by the applicant, and also to all you people and everybody on the Planning Board, that I don't know what I'm talking about, that I've made up these safety concerns. Gentlemen, here is a letter that I got, and the Planning Department has a copy of this as well. The Planning Department has a copy of this letter as well. Do you need it? The planning department has a copy of this letter as well. Do you need it to turn?
Yeah, it's upside, yep, there's upside down.
Oops.
There you go.
And what I, what I want to stress out here is that this is from the deputy director of airports for the FAA Central Region. In a request for information I asked for, he responded back in these way about the North Omaha Airport. The North Omaha Airport, when it's a public use airport, the owner added several structures and sold property to private residences that were within the safety area and operational areas of the runway. The FAA could only encourage the owner to follow our guidelines for added safety. As a result of the discontinued, of the continued disregard to follow safety, state safety requirements, the previous owner of the North Omaha Airport lost their public use status and were forced to change status to a private use. Mister Ackerman went through the, asked the FAA and the state to give him, provide him information and feedback of what it would take to change back to a public use airport. And the FAA director said, "We told Mister Ackerman that the obstructions to his airspace and impacts to his safety areas would need to be removed." Folks, this is exactly what I've been saying the entire time. This is the area that was previously identified in the zoning regulations by the city that this whole area was to be reserved and saved. That's hard for me to get this darn thing presented up to Eli. I'll just kind of move it back and forth. But that outlined area is the area that should have been protected so that the zoning regulations that were set forth that should have been abide, or read by, have been disregarded. And it is in the administrative, in the administrative section of fifty-five six ninety-nine. It shall be the duty of the planning department to administer and enforce this article as it relates to the zoning of safety, safety protection of the zoning of the airport. It was disregarded for a number of years. I don't think probably some of the people that are here are responsible in any way because it happened before them. But the fact that it did happen, folks, it happened, and the planning department was in charge of doing that. They're part of the negligence of why this airport is deemed unsafe. I ask that that be considered in reappraisal of what I've said and the added urgency of trying to address the information that was previously said about me as being incorrect. I ask that you guys reconsider this and deny this and have, move it back and have the owner of the airport, have the airport fixed, and put it back into a public use airport before he tries to expand it and bring other people and more traffic through this airport. It's, it's a poor design. It's a bad plan. It doesn't have a business plan associated with it. Every person I've talked to in aviation laughs at it, says it is not gonna work. He, Pat, is the only one that seems to think it's gonna work. So, I ask you please to consider denying this. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Dan. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, close of public hearing. Did anybody want to come up? I forgot your name, sir. Trevor, did you want to come up and talk about the issues brought up by Kathy and Dan?
Yes.
Especially, especially concerning the safety in his letter from the FAA.
Yes, Trevor Vescrana, TD two, ten-eight-three-six Old Mill Road. Wrote down, tried to write down all the concerns, so I'll kind of just kind of go in order of what I had written down. I think the first one was the sidewalk waiver and the public safety concerns. The waiver that we're seeking would just be for the sidewalk in the right-of-way. As far as onsite circulation, I don't think we're really planning on having pedestrians going from one side of the runway to the other. So, that sidewalk waiver was just for the sidewalk located within the right-of-way. For the tree waiver, that one is for the one tree every forty linear feet along the street frontage. And those trees would be located within that airport arrival and departure zone. Buffer yard trees, we're still maintaining all the required buffer yard. The FAA violations, the owner is still working on addressing FAA violations. There's a number of them we've submitted. The elevation studies to the FAA, and he's got a list of, of different things that need to be marked or removed. We've got a meeting coming up with OPPD on different power poles that are within that violated airspace. So, we're working on, on addressing all of those that we can.
Trevor?
Yeah.
On, on those safety concerns that Dan had gotten from the FAA, those were in regard to it being a public airport. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, is that, so a lot of those things happened, I believe, before Pat bought it?
Correct.
So, is that why he, he asked to go as a private airport because all those things of removing trees and removing houses are kind of out of his?
Would be, yeah.
Is that something else?
Sure, just a second. Is that, is that kind of where we're going with this? Is that why they don't give the approval for, for public airport at this point?
As far as my understanding, yes.
Okay.
That there's already obstructions there wouldn't, that wouldn't be realistic to, to remove, to get that back to public status.
Is his plan to ever get to a public airport, or is he, is he gonna have to keep this private because of these violations?
I, I believe he'd have to keep it private unless he, he would get rid of the violations. But his intent is just for the private airport.
Houses, right? Can't get rid of.
Right.
No, he's attempting to get it back in public use.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Is that it? Okay.
Can I have one rebuttal, please? I'll, I'll bring you up. Thank you, sir.
You're gonna need your name, name and address again.
Sorry, it's Dan Lanfair, seventy-thirty Bennington Road. It's often been said that Pat didn't know anything about it, but I want to submit to you a document from the FAA that clearly states that Pat's name is being part of the sponsored bill, part of the sponsored degradation or removal of the private use to a public use airport. And it's kind of small print, but Mister Ackerman's name is right there. Ah, crap. So, and this is a document from the FAA, folks. This isn't something I pulled off the internet for fun.
Dan, Dan, I don't think we're saying that he didn't know about.
Okay.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Okay.
I think, I think we all knew about.
This gentleman told me that Pat, he didn't know about it before he bought the airport. This includes both Pat and the previous owner acknowledgement that they were gonna be degraded to a private use airport. They both, both their names are on this document.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
And that's what he's abiding by is right now still is private.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Anybody? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, the agenda item on today's docket is for the plat, which was a condition of the major amendment to the aviation special use permit. You know, we're not talking about the improvements. That was already discussed in previous public hearings and voted and recommended for approval by this board. It also went to the zoning board of appeals for certain waivers related to those new improvements. So, I just want to keep in mind, we are here today for the plating purpose to combine the entire site into one lot. The rezoning was also on the December agenda item, so that is not being voted on today. Trevor did mention it regarding the chapter fifty-three waivers. Those are sidewalks related to the right-of-way, basically on the exterior of the site. We are supportive of the waiver of sidewalks as is customary with projects within the North Hills overlay. And then the waiver of the street trees is specifically for trees within the right-of-way. And obviously, we have several different zones here with airport zones, and we have several violations because of trees that have grown too tall on neighboring properties. So, we are obviously supportive of that waiver as well. I do want to just point out, while it is the applicant's desire to bring this airport back as public use to assist with funding that is available from the FAA as well as the state of Nebraska, I will read from section fifty-five six ninety-two of the airport zoning code. This article shall be known as the airport zoning regulations. These regulations are intended to provide for the safe operation of aircraft into and out of Epley Airfield, Millard Airport, and other airports operated by the Omaha Airport Authority and other private aviation airports by providing for zones in which development is restricted. There is no requirement whether an airport has to be public or private. So, I understand the desire for safety and the, I guess, additional review by the FAA and those bodies as it relates to public use airports. There are over thirty-three hundred public use airports that they provide guidance on. There are thousands of other private airports as well. So, the city and the applicant have been working with the state of Nebraska Aviation Department as well as the FAA regarding this. We have hired, the city has hired a consultant to verify the encroachments and violations that exist, both on the airport property as well as surrounding properties. So, we continue to work through that, and that has been accounted for in a condition of the previous major amendment to the special use permit. So, there are ongoing conversations. We would love for the airport to get back its public use status, but that is not, you know, a criteria or, or, you know, even a recommendation at this time from the city of Omaha. So, unless there's any specific questions that we have, staff recommends approval of the waiver to section fifty-three nine-nine sidewalks and section fifty-three nine-eleven street trees. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the three conditions in the report. Approval of the final plat subject to compliance with conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to city council. I will point out that it is the applicant's desire that this plat and the major amendment to the special use permit will accompany, will be, will go together to city council whenever that may be. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Additional comments? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of waiver to section fifty-three nine-nine sidewalks and section fifty-three nine-eleven street trees. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the three conditions outlined in the report and approval of the final plat subject to compliance with the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding the request on the city council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Ross Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Let's take four and thirteen together. Okay.
Agenda item number- One second. We'll circle back to number two. That's on the regular agenda later on, so, just for clarification.
Agenda item number four, case C-3-24-76. Applicant Falcone Land Development LLC requests approval of amendment to the future land use element to the city's plan from industrial to low and low-density residential. Location northwest of two-hundred-ninth and Blondo Streets. And agenda item number thirteen, case C-10-24-77. C-12-24-78. Applicant Falcone Land Development LLC requests preliminary plat approval of Blondo Point, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4, along with approval of a waiver to section fifty-three eight-two-B cul-de-sac length. Location northwest of two-hundred-ninth and Blondo Streets. May we hear from the applicant's representative, please?
Yes, sir. Mister Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jeff Elliott with PEC Engineers. I'm lead engineer on this project representing Falcone Land Development. So, the proposal here before you today is for a single-family housing subdivision. Blondo Street is located on the south side of the project. Union Pacific Railroad tracks on the north side, downtown Elkhorn area is up here to the northeast, two-hundred-ninth Street on the east side, and then undeveloped agricultural land on the west side. The proposal before you is for, the project area is a hundred and seventy-three acres, a total of three-hundred-and-seventy-nine single-family custom lots. The first item on the agenda is in regard to the future land use element. Here in this area, there's a small piece that was designated on the future land use element as industrial. And we were asking the, the department to redesignate this as low-density residential. And we agree with the department. That's more proper use for that piece of land. As I said, the subdivision will be custom lots. A majority of the subdivision, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight lots will be typical custom-type homes with custom builders. There are forty-one lots, and the site elevation rises from the east side to the west side to a high point here where this green area is, the top of the hill. Here, there's forty-one estate-type lots, a minimum hundred feet wide for larger homes. The topography then falls drastically to the west, down to this area, which is about thirty acres, which is unsoureable currently. So, the top of the ridge flows this way. There's sewer availability for these three-hundred-and-sixty-nine lots. This would not sewer thus the large acreage-type lots. There are ten of those. So, we will work with the state of Nebraska to get their approval on septic tank use for these ten lots. MUD will supply water for the whole subdivision, including the acreage lots. We're currently working with the department and Public Works on the design of the exterior roads. We've agreed to improve Blondo Street from the gravel condition that it currently is to a two-lane concrete paved road. The other, we're, as was stated in the report, we're requesting for a waiver of the cul-de-sac length due to the severe drop in elevation differences here. It just is not feasible to put another road into this, this area to provide a loop-type situation. So, thus the request for an extended-length cul-de-sac. We appreciate the department's recommendation that they, they're allowing that. As far as entry points into the subdivision, we have four entry points. Here on Park Road, here on Skyline Drive, and then two-hundred-and-fourteenth Street, and then the cul-de-sac here at two-hundred-and-sixteenth Street. So, currently, Skyline Drive, if you've been on it, you head north. There's a curve around here, another curve, and then it curves back this way. We're working with the department. We will make those typical two, three-way or four-way intersections and take out those curves, make it more safe driving situation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just out of just more curiosity, that, that lot number three-seventy-four, was there a reason you didn't continue those smaller lots across there?
That area is, is a very, has a very nice vista view to the west. So, the developer of the acreage lots has someone interested in, in that particular area. So, we decided to, or he decided to join it in with these other acreage lots, make it more of a, a larger lot. It will have frontage on to the, to the interior with sanitary sewer service.
On both sides or just the one side?
Uh, there, uh, there won't be access from the cul-de-sac because of the severe elevation. There's just no way to get a driveway up to the top. So, the top of the ridge is here. The home, the home site would probably be back a little bit off of the road. Just to take advantage of the views and vistas.
I know there must be some reason.
Jeff, I, McCartell's that own, McCartell Grading that owns the industrial lot there.
Yes.
What have your conversations been with them as far as the ingress, egress there off of Park Road?
We're, we're currently working with them. We met with them, I think, a week and a half ago. So, what department would like is to have them come off with their driveway more of a typical intersection, four-way intersection. I think they're open to that. We just need to work out the final configuration. They want to continue to use that parcel for their large excavating equipment. They park it there. I think they have some maintenance facilities there. So, it'll have to be designed in such a way that they can get in and out and still, we'll, we'll, we'll do the best we can to make it compatible with the, the public streets. The staff has asked that this portion of our street be designed to industrial standards. So, it'll be a wider street with thicker concrete, just in case they access off of that street into that parcel.
Okay, and then, any discussions about a screening on your-
Okay. And then, any discussions about a screening on your lots that back up to there? Are you guys going to do any screening for your lots that back up to?
I would think the developer would put some sort of screening between the two uses there.
Is that a conversation you've been having with McCartell's?
I don't, I don't know that McCartell's had a concern with that, but I think we would, we would, from our side, we'd like to have that in place. Yes.
And my final question, and I'm a little concerned about traffic getting in and out of this area. I know it's already just on school days with the Greenbrier to the, say what?
Greenbrier and Skyline.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's just, it's a tough area right now. I know there's nothing you can do. You're improving the roads, but have you looked at the traffic? Have you done a traffic study?
We've, we've done a traffic count at the intersection here and the intersection here. We did it on a typical, I think it was a Thursday during peak hours, and the, the study came back that just a typical two-lane intersection will work without exclusive left or right turn lane. So yes, we did do a, a traffic study there. In the comments, there is a potential for further traffic investigation work if necessary, and we're happy to do that.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions for Jeff?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing now, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, gentlemen of the Planning Committee. Wesley Seibert, two-one-four-zero-eight, Ridgewood Road. So I'll put the map back up. I may not be as slick as Jeff here. Don't want everything to be upside down, but, all right.
There it is.
So that's my house. It's been my house for twenty-two years.
Where are you at, Wesley?
I'm sorry?
Where, where were you pointing to?
Yeah, so just two-hundred-and-fourteenth and Blondo.
Gotcha.
So I'm on Ridgewood, but Blondo's my backyard. There's a huge steep grade of about twenty-some-odd feet there. And I'm not arrogant or ignorant enough to think that standing before you this afternoon is going to change the development of that land that got just had. I've known Virgil. I've lived next to him when he owned the house there in Greenbrier with his wife, Judy, and the family. But we just want this to be done and thought out in a rational and intelligent way, not just for the expansion of Elkhorn. So when I moved out to Elkhorn, Dodge was a two-lane road, so I can give you maybe some insight about historical developments that's gone on there. I would love a copy of that traffic study. After living there for the past twenty-two years, just as you exit off of Dodge Street alone and turning onto Skyline Road, that's one lane. That one lane services both your left and right turn. So if someone's turning left, let's say there's multiple cars turning left, a car can't go in between that car and turn legally right. There's no turn lane for the facilitation of those two directions. And then during any type of sports that's occurring at the U B T event lately, for the last three weekends, we've had volleyball, it is absolutely impossible to turn left from U B T onto Cumberland Drive just due to the flow of traffic. If you're at that Menards or that Starbucks there, you can't turn left because of the flow that comes onto two-hundred-and-fourth Street. During rush hour on Dodge Street, two-hundred-and-fourth Street backs up all the way to Dodge as it is. So I don't know where the study is for the traffic. I would love to see that. Living on Skyline, unfortunately, a couple summers ago, we had a fatality. This road is a two-lane road. The proposed development that they currently have only accounts for the expansion of sidewalks, and this fatality occurred with a cyclist that was going down Skyline. This occurs all the time. We have cyclists that come through there. The city's already, I mean, the population's already extremely dense with the addition of the Summer Glen Development, which is this area that is south and east of where they're talking about developing this. The Summer Glen Development, which is smaller than what's proposed, has five entrances to this property. And when you look at the development that they currently have, notice that one of the exited, exits that they accounted for only serves ten lots. The rest are only being served by three different exits out of this division, which is absolutely asinine if you know what type of traffic, not only on school days, but this is a problem that the neighborhood has been dealing with during, during weekends as well. There's a park here where there's Little League football, soccer, and other activities where people have to park up and down the street. There is no facilities for these currently to be expanded, and there certainly is no talk from the development that Skyline Road would be expanded to facilitate any of this new traffic. Speeding is certainly a problem. I'll, I'll let you know that, you know, the city was kind enough to build a, a state-of-the-art police department right next to us. You know, I, I know they're good guys and gals, but they don't follow the speed limit either. We live there every single day. The entrance and exits I already spoke about. The other thing I want to show is, is just what the city's been responsible for. So living in Greenbrier, and these are what I like at least to consider pretty nice homes. I mean, I've been fortunate enough to have been there for over two decades. That's, that's Ridgewood Road. So that's my road in between two-hundred-first and two-hundred-and-fourteenth. These are potholes that are larger than ones that we even see downtown. Nothing against downtown, but it's typically not what you see in neighborhoods that have home prices, you know, in excess of five-hundred to one-point-two million. Yeah.
I was just going to say, that's a different issue than what we're talking about.
Well, the issue is more, councilperson, just the issue that the, this, this proposal's to build something new, and we're not taking care of what we already have. All right? This problem of the roads has existed literally for over a decade. All right? So our roads aren't fixed. Now we're talking about expanding, and the problems that we're talking about are only going to be exacerbated because there's more issues and there's more surface area to take care of. And then in regards to the population concentration, this is another issue that most of the neighbors, I, I'd be interested to know, other than, I've spoke about the exits and the population density that would occur with these pretty small lots in comparison to what we currently have in Greenbrier. I have about three-quarters of an acre. So for these large homes that will average, you know, my home's price on these type of lots, I want to know what studies have been done in regards to education. The last school board bond that was passed on September of two thousand and twenty-three addresses the expansion of Elkhorn Schools. It goes through two thousand and twenty-six. And the areas of econ, of growth that were attended include Wood, Woodbrooks, Blue Sage, Elkhorn Valley Middle, and Elkhorn North. There's no comments in regards to what will happen with West Ridge Elementary School. How possibly could West Ridge support this expanded population this quick? There would have to probably be some type of redistricting, and then how Elkhorn Middle and Elkhorn High could support it as well has not been explained to the neighborhood. I can submit the photos or a summary of my testimony as well.
If you want to, you can bring it over to Eric.
Sure.
He'll, he'll receive that for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wesley. Thanks for coming down today.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? We'll need your name and address, sir. Please give us new information also.
Sure. No problem. Yeah, Richard Panowitz at twenty-one-four-one-two Ridgewood Road. I won't cover any of the items that Wes had talked about. I'm neighbors with Wes. The one thing that I wanted to address would be the southern, the southern border here. We brought it up during the comment section of, it would be really nice to have some, I think you call it a screening, trees or something there.
Yeah, I was talking between McCartell's.
Yeah, you were talking over here.
Yes.
But I mean, you know, that would be for the homeowners for Falcone that would benefit from that most likely. But this would benefit both the, the homeowners for Falcone and also all these lots along here. I, as Wes said, there's a huge variation in elevation. So I happen to sit down, and I look up, and I can see all the deer on the ridge and everything, which I, I understand that won't happen anymore. All right? But it'd be awfully nice to have that barrier there, at least two rows of trees, maybe one that's fast-growing and one that's, you know, a little slower-growing. I'll plant my own trees. I'll take responsibility on my lot, which I already have been. But that would certainly help the landowners, I think, on both parts. And we never really got a commitment, and I guess they wouldn't at that point in time, but it, I would like to get that commitment from the developers that they would do that on that southern border. The other thing is, it snows. Doesn't snow a lot here anymore, but when it snows, that would really help keep that, that, that Blondo Road just fills up. So it would really help as a snow fence as well. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Richard. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Sue Sadbeck. I live at two-ten-oh-seven Honeysuckle Drive. And so I live in the Greenbrier neighborhood. I just want to point out, I know the roads in Greenbrier are a separate issue, but three exits are on, would use those roads. Three of those exits on this map, down here, here, and up, not here, sorry, these two would go onto those roads. They're in such poor condition now. That's, that's all I've got. It's just...
Okay, thank you, Sue. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jeff, did you want to come up and?
Sure.
Address issues from Wesley, Richard, and Sue?
Again, Jeff Elliott, PEC Engineering. I might start with the last comment first. The idea that this subdivision would go through Greenbrier to access Skyline Drive or anywhere else, I don't think is valid. I think that our neighbors would come out onto Blondo Street and then try to get out as quick as, quick as they can out to Dodge and on Skyline Drive and wherever they're intending to go.
I think, I think that's what she meant, is there'd be more traffic on Blondo, is, you know, not going to be there.
No, no, Mr. Moore, actually, you looked at two-hundred-and-fourteenth, two-hundred-and-fourteenth would be an alternative route right through our subdivision.
I'm sorry.
To be away from Skyline Drive and then turn onto Greenbrier and Honeysuckle, then to Skyline to give, because then you would avoid two different stop signs.
Okay, thank you.
As far as some of the other traffic concerns, the traffic that I think Wes was talking about by U B T and, and areas removed from our subdivision is really away from the purview of our analysis. And we'd take direction from the city if, if we need to look at those items. But, and then as far as access points in, in our subdivision, I guess we have lined up our, our roads with existing roads in Greenbrier and then here at Park Drive and at Skyline Drive. So our access points are lining up with the, the existing major roadways that are outside of our subdivision. Adding more driveways at different locations, I can't see, would really be helpful to moving traffic any faster than, than what we're proposing to do. We have this spine that runs through the subdivision. We've made it a boulevard-type look for landscaping, and this would facilitate moving traffic in and out of our subdivision. As far as the biker fatality, obviously, we're sorry that, that that happened, but I would think changing this curb situation where a biker could come down, thinking they're going to take the curve, maybe missed the curve and, and flew through it, we're going to create a stop situation here where both vehicles and bikers would see a stop sign, and hopefully they would come and make a stop before they move on to the other parts of the road. As far as density goes, this is low-density overall. I figured that we're at two-point-two lots per acre. That's including the acreages. If you just look at this area here, in the custom lot area, it's two-point-six lots per acre, which is much less than what could go here. You could get a, a subdivision with much higher density. As far as Elkhorn Schools go, we did contact Elkhorn Schools. We asked if they'd be interested in putting an elementary school on this site. They said that they are adequately, their facilities were adequate to handle the residents that were, would move into this subdivision. As far as the offer to put screening on the south side of Blondo Street, we can work with the city on that and see if, if we can, if R S I D can afford to do that, and if the city would allow us to do that, I think we'd be open. With that, I think that's all that I had.
Blondo Street, I'm a little concerned with the traffic too, but Blondo Street, you're going to improve Blondo Street?
Correct.
From one point to another point, right? Is, so where you're, where you're connecting Blondo Street, is it paved right now?
It's paved right here at Skyline Drive. We're going to have to do some work here to the east side to match it, to get rid of this curb situation. So I can foresee that we get somewhere into this other curb area. And then we're, we're improving it all the way to the westerly edge of the acreage lots.
And Blondo does not connect to the east to any major thoroughfare going north-south, does it?
That is correct.
So the traffic will have to, again, if you wanted to get to two-hundred-and-fourth Street, what would you, what would the route be for either, either, you know, the developments to the south of Blondo or to the north there, the new development there? How would they get to two-hundred-and-fourth?
It would have to go south on Skyline Drive down to, I think, Cumberland or Veterans, and then out to two-hundred-and-fourth Street that way. If you wanted to go north, I think you'd take Park Drive. You'd either go in, into downtown Elkhorn and then weave your way out. I believe you can take Park Drive, and then it goes, it goes out towards two-hundred-and-fourth Street towards, I think there's a viaduct you go under.
You can go underneath.
And somehow you have to get around there, or you can turn. There's a, the apartments that are right here and just to the east here, you can take that back to the south and then go by the McDonald's and, and get out to two-hundred-and-fourth Street.
So going, if you, if you're going south through Skyline Drive, that's through a neighborhood?
Well, Skyline Drive, there's, there's some older houses that front onto Skyline Drive, but a majority of the new developments...
But mostly is, is, is...
It's all single-family.
Residential.
Right, until you get to the street that goes to U B T.
Well, and, and Mike, I mean, Park Road is, is virtually a direct shot. People coming out of downtown Elkhorn, which is just off to the northeast of this site, you're just crossing the railroad tracks, and you're heading east on Park Road. It's very direct.
So Park Road goes further east would connect directly into two-hundred-and-fourth?
Yeah, it just meanders a little bit as you go up the hill because there's a bridge. If Park Road went directly east, it goes under two-hundred-and-fourth, but it, it's, it's a very direct route to, to connect.
Okay.
Shh, please.
I have another question, Jeff. Just a second, Dave. Please, and you know, my opening remarks, I said you had to remain silent while seated. I, I'm just going to remind you of that again.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mike, my only question is, is on Blondo, that's, there's, there's a, a wide variety of grades on the south side of Blondo down through there. Or somewhere it's very high. How's the new grade of Blondo going to be? Is it going to be where it is now? Is it going to go up? Is it going to go down?
We're working on the design of that. It's going to be somewhat challenging to match the yards that are on the south side with the development on the north side. It's my recollection that right now, I think we're looking to have the profile be very similar to what it is today. And we would either slope down into the yards or have to do, you know, some type of retainage to...
Well, that's, yeah, that'd be my question. I don't know what to write away.
And those details, we just haven't totally worked out yet. We're still pretty preliminary here.
Got it. Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions for Jeff?
Street's going to be two lanes? Is there a central turning lane?
How is that going to be configured?
Blondo Street would be two-lane.
Okay.
Two lane each direction?
One lane each direction, two, two total lanes.
No center lane?
No center lane, correct. There just is not enough traffic to warrant.
Okay. Everybody done?
Yep.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, so Jeff did a good job of discussing a few of the points that I was going to talk about. I was going to start with Elkhorn Public Schools. They are part of our, what's called the D R C group. That's a group of about twenty-five to thirty organizations or contacts, utility companies, school districts, other interested parties for whenever development comes in. So...
So we send all of our plans for all of the agenda items to that DRC group after we receive the materials each month. I know that Elkhorn Public Schools is very diligent in reviewing those plans because this is the first time often that projects are made public. And so I know they, they are dialed in on a monthly basis. They frequently don't provide comments, which is typical with most school districts. But I know that they review plans and are aware of it. And obviously Jeff discussed actually having conversation with them about a school there. So as far as the density, the master plan designates this area as low-density residential, which as you're aware, supports zoning up to the R5 district, which in theory could allow 14 and a half units per acre. As Jeff mentioned, with the acreage lots, 2.2 units per acre, without those, 2.6. I'm not saying they would do that, not saying they would do this because they're not proposing this, but the master plan would support six times the density for a site this area. So I understand it's, you know, a, a new large subdivision. But on the, on the scope of density and how we discuss that across the city, a very low-density project. If you have specific questions regarding traffic study, we do have Public Works here, who would be best to comment on that. Other than that, I don't think I have much to add, other than the recommendation of, Jeff had mentioned the cul-de-sac waiver request, and we are supportive of that based on those acreage lots and connectability and trying, you know, there are steep slopes there as it crosses over the ridge. So staff recommends approval of a waiver to section 5382B cul-de-sac length, approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 34 conditions in the recommendation report.
I was gonna, is Ryan here? Ryan, can you come up, please? Just, I got a question for you before I call for the motion. And?
Ryan, Hospital Public Works.
You and I touched on this in the pre-meeting. Blondo, the extension to east, is that, is that able to take place? And if it is, when would that take place?
As projects have occurred.
Out to 204th or out?
Yeah, and you're, so you're referring here going to the east?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So as projects have occurred, we've tried to have dedicated rights of way such that we could, in theory, pursue a project in the future. It'd be a city-led project and we'd have to fund it. But there's some challenges there. There's a drainage way and some parkland and, but we are keeping things open so that it could be potentially a project that occurs at some point in the future.
But it's nowhere on your future plan?
It's not in the CIP, no.
Okay. Which would put it off, how long do you think?
Uh, CIP currently goes through 2029, so that'd be the absolute minimum, yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional comments, questions? We already had Eric's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I apologize, we had two agenda items, so.
Oh, yeah, we got, uh.
We can stick with the recommendation for 13. Let me backtrack to four then afterwards.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, let me make this better. Section 5382B cul-de-sac length, approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 34 conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yeah.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Regarding agenda item four, this is the future land use map for a small segment from industrial to low-density residential. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Morris? Kate? Soto Longo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Agenda item number seven. Let me get to that. Case C3-24-89, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location, 2613 Grant Street, 2617 Grant, 2601 Grant, 2616 Burdette, 2210 North 26th Street, and 2214 North 26th Street. Eric, are you presenting this?
Nope, Kelly's coming up.
Kelly? Okay. I didn't see you, Kelly. I'm sorry.
Just hiding in the back. Good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey, City Planning Department. So this case would approve that the city is okay to dispose of these properties, does not entail to who or for how much, but just that the city no longer needs to own these properties and can go ahead and sell them. I believe I spoke with the gentleman, so I don't know if he is still here, who wanted it pulled off consent.
Oh, okay.
He's interested in owning the property. He owns a neighboring property. So we exchanged contact information and we'll continue in our conversation with him then, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
He may still be here, but I, I'm not sure.
All right. Any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? He must have left. Close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Okay, we're up to agenda item number 23. That was on for layover. Gotta find it here. Agenda item number 23, case C8-24-66, applicant Tommy LaCarbo. Tommy LaCarbo, request approval of special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the GI District. Location, 13435 A Street. Sir, you're up. Name and address, please.
Tommy LaCarbo, 535 North 10th Avenue, Springfield, Nebraska.
Did you wanna say anything about your case?
Yeah, so I'll apologize a little for the process here. I've started this process as trying to open a private billiards club. And this being a first commercial business for myself, was not aware of the planning, zoning, and such requirements needed. I relied on my realtor and the landlord to guide me. So having put the cart before the horse, I've later hired an architect. He's here to help represent me. So huge learning curve here. So what I'm trying to do is, like I said, a private billiards club. This is designed for the competitive pool player. Typically in Omaha, we have one pool hall and then a bunch of bars. For the competitive level of play that we like to travel to, I personally just returned from a two-week trip to Vegas for a national tournament. Excuse me. We don't have a facility here that supports that. The pool hall that we have in Omaha has been around for 30 to 40 years, and the equipment is just outdated. So when we travel around the country, our players are not able to practice and perform on a level as people around the country. So having, doing that, we're not open to the public. We are membership-only, so think of it as a 24/7 fitness center, like a gym with card access. Excuse me. And because of that, I looked for a place that was not in a retail location because to keep the cost affordable to members, I couldn't afford retail frontage on a typical strip mall where you would find a bar, restaurant, pool hall type place. So while it looks like a pool hall, it's not serving alcohol, it's not serving food, and it's not open to the public. So when I found this space, the landlord gave us, and is written in our lease, that this is the only thing that we can use the building for. The other tenants in the building were made aware of what we were doing. And I've actually got a, a letter here from them, the, the only other tenant in the building. Well, let me take that back. The landlord is also in the building as a tenant. So the question came up was, are you gonna let people bring alcohol? So I said, well, I'm not a big drinker myself, but I'll ask the question. So I went to the State Liquor Board, asked the question, and they said, yes, you would need a bottle club license. What's the process for that? Applied for the bottle club application or license. Got in touch with the Planning Department's Kurt Urkowski and the local fire inspector, who made me aware of, you will need to go through a certificate of occupancy inspection. You possibly could need sprinklers. So this is where the learning curve really began on my part, which is when I hired Mr. Sanford. So I thought this was gonna be easy. So, and I'm telling you all this because as part of that process, as you're well aware with any liquor license, you must go to city council. So I've already been to city council. City council's made aware of what our location is, how it's zoned, what the other businesses in the area are. We did have some neighbor objections due to that. But city council did vote unanimous, 7-0 for approval. I later went to the State Liquor.
Sorry, interrupt you. What were they approving at that?
They were approving the recommendation for the liquor license. And the, and the general, we discussed all the general operations of the business. Is, you know, location and such, okay. So then after that, went on to the State Liquor Board, similar type hearing as this, and, and the city council. Went through that, similar objections from, same objections, excuse me, from the same neighbors. And they also approved it unanimous for recommendation. So worked with Mr. Urkowski. We figured out, and, and Mr. Sanford here, on whether we needed sprinklers or not. That took three months to figure out, you know. And once that happened, I scheduled for certificate of occupancy inspections, which is when I found out I need a special use permit. So that's why I'm here today, is to get the special use permit so that we can open for business.
Just curious, what were the neighbor's objections?
Neighbor's objections were parking, I think a little bit of stereotyping maybe with, I'll, I'll just say this is like bikers, people with tattoos, pool players hang out in bars. It just gets kind of a negative stereotype sometime. And that's not the crowd we're attracting. That's not the membership that I'm looking for. So I think they were concerned with some of those things. One neighbor said he currently has vandalism at his property. And a point that I had thought of, but city council actually made the point for me, was that with the liquor license becomes, or comes, police patrol. So this might actually help solve some problems that our neighbors are currently having. As well as typical businesses in the area closed at five or six, now you're gonna have people there in the evening hours, lights will be on, there'll be traffic. It, it might sway some people from doing something mischievous in this area, so.
How are you, how are you, how's your membership gonna work then? I'm a terrible pool player, and so if I wanted to join your club, could I just join your club even though I'm not competitive at it?
Uh, so first off, I'll screen every member, because I am looking for the pool player. But, uh, but, but the things that, that I would deny as a membership are, are you a annoying troublemaker? Are you somebody that is, is just coming here from the alcohol perspective? Or, you know, what's your intent of being here? You know, so if, if you have a, a good recommendation from another member, if, if I can't dig up any dirt on you type situation, then I'm probably gonna grant your membership. But we are limiting membership. So, so that'll factor into some of the concerns that came with parking. Limited membership to 64 members. There's a lot of math involved with that number if you're interested. But basically, we have eight pool tables. If two people were playing on any, on all tables at any given time, that's 16 people playing pool. I'm not gonna get another 48 people sitting around to, to watch.
You're not gonna have competitions?
We will have tournaments. So again, going down to the, how many people can be playing, we may double that number. So you have half the people playing and half the people waiting. But as you've probably seen in the plan we submitted, we only have a fixed number of seats. And the typical tournament's gonna run through one day. So you really have to limit the amount of participants in a tournament to, to be able to finish it in a certain amount of time. So, so with that, you know, having 16 people there on a typical day, tournaments would be run on a weekend where there's no other businesses around. And I think the parking plan wasn't submitted with the application, but we have that today to turn in, which I believe was the reason it was recommended to layover. We can support 41 parking spots. And our primary hours are gonna be after the other tenants in our building are gone and weekends when they're not there. So we should have access to all 41 spots in our parking, parking lots. So.
Any additional comments, questions? Thank you. Thank you, Tommy. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? None? Okay. Close the public hearing. Eric?
Tommy, so if you could step back up, please. So describe a typical tournament or how often, how many people, spectators? Just elaborate a little bit that for, for that, for me?
Yeah, so this was part of the learning curve I had going through this process because as a pool player and, and the business operator here, I said, you know, I'm never gonna have more than 45 people in this room. And the way I came up with that number was if I ran, well, I have 27 fixed seats plus 16 people at the tables at any given time, that's 43. Myself, plus one other person to maybe help run the tournament or do some video streaming. That, we do a lot of live streaming and stuff like that, Facebook, YouTube, that type thing. So I came up with a number of 45. So I was kind of blown away to see that our occupancy per code, which was kind of part of the dispute, put us up to 96. Physically, we can't fit that many people in the building. So on an average, average day, max number of players that could be playing would be 16. And if there was somebody in every seat, that's another 27. Most people aren't gonna just sit around and, and, and watch for, just from a practice session. If we were running a tournament, like I said, the, the head count would be limited to 32, which is a feasible number to get done in one day. And as the day went on, so maybe all 32 are there at the beginning of the tournament. After two rounds, you know, a quarter of the people have lost out, they're gonna be leaving the building.
What's your hours of operation?
Uh, the hours of operation are 24/7, so similar to the 24/7 fitness gym. So there will be some people there during Monday through Friday, business hours. Typically, your retired folks or maybe a shift worker. But the majority are gonna be after five, when people typically get off work, and weekends.
So how are you getting manned 24 hours a week?
It's an unmanned facility.
Is there a way to, if I'm a member and I wanna know ahead of time whether or not there's a pool table available, can I schedule that ahead of time? Or is it just a first-come, first-served basis?
The answer to your question is yes. However, I don't have that implemented yet. And the reason is, that's quite an expensive option to, to have, and I don't know if it's necessary yet. So if my membership supports the fact that I have congestion times where people are waiting on tables, and I'll be able to monitor that through video, my card access system or access control system. I have tons of alerts, tons of reports. I can see every entry in and out the door. I can actually restrict entry if I need to, based on a, a unique entry per day. But I'll make that decision down the road. I just didn't wanna incur that expense right from the beginning if I didn't think it was necessary.
Yeah, just seems like a way to limit or prevent parking issues if you end up having parking issues.
Right. And I'd like to point out too, a lot of my members that have pre-registered are husband-wife couples. Some families have, have joined, so those people would be coming as a more than one member, but in one vehicle as well. I believe our parking plan shows 36 is the required number based on code, and we actually have 41 spots in our lot.
Thank you, Tommy. Eric?
Yeah, so staff's concern was the lack of details about tournaments and how many spectators, participants could come. Just, we've had issues with other sites and tournaments, and I know it's different than a billiards club, but obviously each of these individual is most likely driving their own vehicle and obviously the numbers can get fairly quick. You know, we didn't know you have access to the entire parking. So we do have the recommendation for layover. We are going to keep that. Obviously, the board can, can vote how they see fit. But I think we need time to be able to review that parking plan, make sure those stalls are, are striped. The operations plan, go into more detail, kind of like you just described, about the tournaments, about the daily operations, just how you see that working. How many parking stalls do you have access to? Because I know there's parking on both sides of the building. When we looked at this originally, we did not, you know, we don't, I don't know the parking arrangement, the other tenant. So you could come back on for the next meeting, but we're not equipped to just be able to review this on the fly and change our recommendation. So you coordinate with us on the resubmital, be back on in a month. That's how the staff would recommend layover.
I mean, respectfully, I'd like to ask if there's any way we could simply look at this today. I've, I've already been. I've, I've already been waiting six months to get this place open. Again, my ignorance of the code and the policy, I've accepted full responsibility to that. I have done nothing but follow the policies and procedures that have been presented to me. I have reviewed everything that you just pointed out, the operation, uh, the business plan and everything with city council already, when we looked at the liquor license, um, you know, uh, approval. So if it's, if this is the one thing that's, that's holding me up, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, right now, there's no revenue being generated and I'm paying the lease out of my pocket. So this is, this is very low, um, revenue generation, but expensive for an individual to pay. Um, and if parking is the biggest concern, I think we've showed the numbers here that, that, uh, support we can have enough parking for our membership.
Tommy, I think you're very well intentioned with this, I, I truly do. But I would feel more comfortable as a planning board member to make sure the planning department first had a full review of everything that they need in order to make a recommendation for approval. It's nothing against what you've done, I understand where you're at, I think you're very well intentioned. But I would feel more comfortable as a planning board member personally.
Is that an exhibit that you have in front of you that you, you've given to the city?
I don't know if it's been submitted electronic, but.
Thank you, Tommy.
Uh, so, so just one question so I can clarify what, what would be needed.
We've closed the public hearing, but I, I'll, go ahead, I'll allow you one, one question.
Okay. So is the parking the only thing that the layover is for?
As well as the lacking of the details, further detailing in the operations plan. So we'll need more info, tournaments, standard days, just.
Do you have a business plan?
Yes, and so that was all given to city council. I guess I wasn't under the impression we would review all that, those items again. So I can submit that to the planning board if needed. I, I was under the impression that this board made a recommendation on planning and zoning to go to city council for final approval. Am I incorrect in that?
No, that's accurate. However, the detailed operating statement is a, is a code requirement for a special use permit. So.
Okay.
That, along with the site plan and there's other criteria laid out.
I think we're gonna move on, Tommy. And if you've got any questions, you're welcome to talk to Eric or Mike or after the meeting.
Okay, last thing, am I already on the agenda for April or is this just another application?
Just touch base with us next week here.
And your name is?
Eric.
Eric, thank you. Thank you.
You've already given your recommendation. Do we have any additional comments? Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Number six to zero.
Item number twenty-nine was on for layover.
Thank you.
Case C seven dash twenty-four dash seventy-four. Applicant Steve Fowler. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC district. MCC overlay pending, location southeast of two hundred and fourth street and West Dodge Road. May we hear from the applicant, please? Are you the applicant, sir?
No, I'm not the applicant.
Okay. Okay.
Hello, I'm Joe Foley, uh, one forty-five oh three Grover Street here in Omaha. Uh, here representing the applicant.
Did you say Joe or Joel?
Joe.
Okay.
Yep. Basically, what, what you had before, what we submitted was a conditional use permit for consideration for multi-family, a single multi-family building on a, hope to be zone CC zoning at two hundred and fourth and Dodge. Um, we're currently going through the plating process. Um, I think the preliminary plat has been approved, uh, by council. The final plat is pending, um, some work on the public improvements to Farnham Street, uh, that we're working through right now, uh, to satisfy Public Works. So this conditional use permit is, uh, kinda getting ahead of the game on what the owner would like to do to the property. Basically ninety-eight multi-family units, and I think we had about two hundred and five, uh, parking spaces planned. Um, that's a combination of, uh, garage and surface parking on the site. And we are working through some comments that we received from staff and we're fine with the layover. There's a lot of tree mitigation issues and landscaping issues that we're, we're currently working through. So we'll get that resubmitted and hopefully be back before you here. With that, I'll leave it for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Steve Rule. I live on three oh two North, two hundred Second Street. Elk Valley subdivision that's immediately to the east of this project. We've gotten several letters uh, from, from you folks. We've gone to some other meetings. There is one thing that I would like to ask. I think it's kinda leaked out at one meeting because they've never had anything in here about a roundabout being put in on Farnham Street, right off two hundred and fourth street to be able to access this property. Can anybody tell me when that was voted on and that was approved?
We'll, uh, address that in a few minutes. Just continue on with your questions if you would, yeah.
Okay. I guess the, the planning board, I, I look at all the boards in Omaha. I, at one time, way out western Banner County, I was on the school board and I was a county commissioner. So a lot of important boards down here. I always thought it was the, uh, city council, maybe the board of commissioners. And as I would drive through west Omaha, you guys, you guys probably are one of the most important boards in this whole area. And I do appreciate your service. I don't know if anybody ever says that to you, but you guys got a hell of a job. We got, we got growing pains in west Omaha and you guys know all about them. You, that's, you hear about that all the time. I used to see corn and soybean fields when I drove to Gretna and now I don't see any more corn and soybean fields. So you guys knows what's going on out there.
I appre- we appreciate the compliment, but it's the planning department for the city of Omaha.
Well, it's got, it's gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta fall on the sword. So I'm learning about how, I guess, the big, big city government works since I'm a neighbor there and I've watched. Reason I bought there originally is because it was a forest of trees behind me. What a windbreak and it blocked everything off of two hundred and fourth. Well, now that's all been scraped and it's being developed. And I guess one question I would have is when the process starts with somebody buying a property like that, now they're doing work in there and they're going full bore and it's not a hundred percent proved, but somewhere along this process with you folks, it was a foregiven conclusion that you probably were not gonna try to stop this project.
I, I think all they did, sir, was demo the structures that were in there and kinda cleaned up the site.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that your goal is to try to get a lot of these people doing this to the finish line with their projects. And of course, they call that progress down here when you cut down a half of a forest behind several houses to the east on Elk Valley subdivision. And so I get to see everything that's going on there. I can tell you that I, I, I think everything is fine, what's going on. So you are Andrew, right?
I am Joe.
You're Joe. So you are from Foley South?
Steve?
Yes.
You have to address.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to see that, the, the last little proposal that, that you folks got on the subdivision, that, was it Joe? Did you just went, you, you just went through that I, that I've got also? So I don't know how many, um, of these proposals have been presented to you, but every time I get a letter, they're all different. So we went from maybe, uh, some single-family homes to now we're going to multifamily homes. That was a few months ago. We're going, we went from a maybe two, maybe three-story. Now we're going to a four-story apartment comp- complex with a building, with a garage underneath, so we're gonna dig a hole for a garage. So we're gonna have, uh, eighty-eight parking spaces and a hundred and sev- seventeen parking spaces. We're gonna have, you know, a little over two hundred people coming and going from this apartment complex every day. And you're gonna go down to Farnham and you're gonna go up the street to a roundabout. And you're gonna do a roundabout and you're gonna come down the street. You guys have traffic problems. That's a traffic problem. I mean, your guy back there, I think I talked to him a few months ago. That will be a traffic problem. I don't know how you can solve the problem of getting in and out and, and allowing this project to continue because the traffic coming in and going using that roundabout, I'll tell you, is gonna be, it's gonna be backed up. I've been down there when people are going to work and it's, you have to wait almost clear up to extra space storage, which is like a, a block to the east. And that church, the Presbyterian church is right there. And I think that roundabout is somewhere in there. I've never seen it on any of your information that you've given me where that roundabout is supposed to go.
We'll, we'll address that, sir.
You'll address that, okay. The only, the only other thing that I have
Okay.
right now, I'm against the proj- project, is that they are going to put a walking path up against, right up against the back lots of the subdivision to the east there. And it's a nature walking path. I don't know how that will be maintained or I don't know for sure what that means. Maybe Joe can address that in a minute. We were also, uh, told, and we talked about a fence or some sort of a barrier that was going to be put on the backside of this apartment complex. So I drove around town and I drove around Omaha and I looked at some older apartments. I went out and looked at some newer apartments that back up to subdivisions, residential areas. They all have some sort of a barrier built up against residential areas. Whether it's a chain link fence or whether it's block wall or whether it's whatever. And I don't see anything on this new proposal about any kind of a fencing along that, up against the residential. Anyhow, thank you for your time.
All right, Steve, thank you.
About all I got.
All right. Any other opponents?
Hello there, I'm Byron Abler, one ten South, two hundred Second Street. All right, I also back right up to about the center of this project. And, uh, it's showing, well, apparently now they're gonna have a walkway all the way around along our fence. I have a chain link fence, not very high, right behind my place. I can easily scale it. And, uh, so people will be able to come and go pretty easy. Their patios are gonna look right down on us. We have a patio down by the fence. And, uh, it's just looking like, uh, the fencing is a problem right now. I would sure like to see a bigger barrier so we don't have issues with people coming and going. It's, it's a little scary right now, so. It, and put ninety-eight units in there, it seems pretty congested already and how awful it's, it already is to get out in the mornings and stuff. I know I have a pickup and trailer. When I come down to the corner, I end up backed way up and it's, it's hard. Also, um, oh, let's see, I had one more thing, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, with, every meeting we've been to so far, they've talked about three-story, um, buildings. And all of a sudden, the letter I got this week says four stories on it. And talking about an underground garage as well. So there goes our beautiful sunset. But thank you for our time.
Thank you, Byron. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Joe, did you wanna come up and give you the opportunity to address their concerns about screening, trails, walk, walkways, traffic?
Yes, I can try.
Need your name and address again, Joe?
Sure. Uh, Joe Foley, one forty-five oh three Grover Street here in Omaha. There were a lot of things there, I was jotting things down, so I wanna kinda start from the beginning.
Yeah, give that. There you go.
I talked about it before, we're also going through the plating process at the same time. So the questions on the, the traffic, uh, the proposed improvements to Farnham Street, um, that's where that's coming from. Part of the plat requirements were, was to do a traffic study. The issue with, uh, the way this property is accessed off Farnham is that frontage road for this property, it is really close to two hundred and fourth street. So the exercise of that traffic study in part was to figure out the best, safest way to get traffic into the site and out of the site, um, without impacting two hundred and fourth street, especially people wanting to come into the site and trying to turn left onto that frontage road right off two hundred and fourth street. So there were a few different options evaluated in that traffic study. Um, and the, the best solution, and I think Public Works agreed, is, uh, to construct a traffic circle back up the hill a little bit. So people wanting to come off two hundred and fourth street and go into the site, can drive in and around that traffic circle and, uh, and get up into the site. That's the purpose of that traffic circle. So that's part of the plating process. That's why it's not an exhibit in this conditional use permit. Let's see. Um, as far as the, the other proposed uses, we, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and I think I talked to these gentlemen at that meeting, I think in December, maybe. What we presented there was a multi-family, uh, building. I, I'd have to go back and look at the exhibits, but it was at least three stories with the parking underneath. It, it's been pretty consistent since that time. Um, we did discuss the possibility of putting a fence, um, to replace some of the older fences along that back property line. And I'll revisit that with, uh, with the developer on that. The trail that we're referring to, essentially this site is kinda landlocked. It's, it's kinda tucked in. So the idea on, uh, having a, really just a, even a gravel path around that site is to just give residents of the apartment complex the opportunity to, if they wanna go out and walk a dog or something like that, to be able to loop around that site. That's the, that's the idea there, is what that is. So it's basically a little grass trail through the, the trees back around that building. And you're correct on that. Talked about the initial work on the site. The existing, uh, structures there, the, the lot is zone CC currently and it always was. So they did get started on that. They did a demo project to remove those existing structures, um, last fall and kinda get, get everything cleaned up. I think that's, that's what was on my list. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Any questions for Joe? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep.
This, uh, have you seen a drawing of that roundabout or anything, Eric?
Yeah, the roundabout was part of the plat that was on the November first planning board meeting. And then it was approved by city council, January ninth. That was, the, the preliminary plat was approved by council. The final plat and the rezoning still need to go to council. But, yeah, that roundabout, um, you know, basically allows that turning, we have Public Works here to, you know, talk in further detail. But it allows the access further away from two hundred and fourth street. You know, the roundabout's not shown in, in this project because that was. Um, you know, the roundabout's not shown in, in this project because that was, that was a separate plating effort. But yes, I mean, it is a challenge based on where that access, the proximity that was provided to two hundred and fourth street. Um, you know, a little bit challenging area, you know, the, the majority of this site had commercial zoning from City of Elkhorn after that was annexed. The northern segment was state right-of-way that was sold from the state of Nebraska directly to the property owner. The zoning typically, whenever there's a vacation or, or sale of state or city right-of-way, it takes on the adjacent zoning, but because there was both residential and commercial, the, the zoning of that northern piece to commercial was included with the plat. Um, I don't have much else to add at this point, there's uh several items that we're working through the development team with. Um, so staff recommends layover.
Yeah, that roundabout, uh, Dave reminded me I was gone that month, so I, I don't remember that, so I was out of town. Yeah, a good reason. Okay, any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion? I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
For the benefit of the neighbors, if this case is back on next month, we will not re-notify. Um, if it's a later date such as the May planning board or later, we will. So just check with city staff in a couple weeks if, if you do have questions about that.
Is there certain department we call?
There should be a planner contact information on the letter you received.
Okay.
At the bottom of the page, you can reach out to that person.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, agenda item number two, we're back off of the consent. Uh, agenda number two, case C seven dash nineteen dash thirty-one. Applicant Saint Robert Bellam- What'd she say? Okay, applicant Saint Robert Bellamine Church of Omaha requests approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R two district. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. This was laid over from our February meeting, location one nineteen zero zero Pacific Street. May we hear, David, are you presenting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, uh seventeen hundred Farnham Street, with me, Father Dave Reason.
I reside at Saint Roberts, one one eight oh two Pacific Street.
And Kyle Hossi with E and A is here as well, if we have questions for him. So this is really, this is an application for a new sign, uh along Pacific Street uh for Saint Robert Bellarmine Catholic Church and School. Um, the planning department has recommended approval of this with a number of conditions. Uh, my client is amenable to all of those conditions except one. And the one is that, uh, the application for, was for a sign that's twelve feet tall, ninety-two square feet. The recommendation is for a sign that is six feet tall, uh, and about four feet wide, twenty-five square feet. So that sign that, that is recommended for approval, six feet tall, about four feet wide, that's only a little bit taller and only a little bit wider than I am. Uh, not a very big sign when you're going by at forty miles an hour on Pacific. As you can see here on the exhibit that I have, um, the, the church site is zoned R two. Um, all around it though, the other three corners of that intersection have commercial zoning. The church site also is zoned, uh, it has an MCC overlay on it. This sign, uh, it's the underlying zoning district, or the more restrictive of the two that guides the sign uh allowance, as I understand it. The MCC overlay though would a si- would allow a sign of this size. So if this site were to be rezoned to be consistent with the zoning of the, the properties on the other three corners of this major commercial intersection, this sign likely would be allowed as is. Uh, on the two corners on the south side of Pacific, there are pole signs. Um, the famous Big Fred sign being one of those. Uh, and there's another one on the corners, or closer to the corners as well. Um, so fundamentally, this sign that is being requested at twelve feet tall, ninety-two feet, uh, in total area is consistent with the neighborhood. What's not consistent with the neighborhood is the R two zoning for this corner of the intersection. Now, one way to deal with this, of course, would be to request an upzoning of that parcel that would be, I'm sure, consistent with the city's master plan, given the nature of that corner. But that, of course, is a whole other process that could be denied. Um, but that opens up that corner then to whatever might be allowed under that uh less restrictive, more intensive zoning district. We're not asking for that. We're just asking not to sort of face the burden of the legacy R two zoning of that corner and, and be required to have a very small sign. Again, there are other conditions in the staff report, times of operation and things like that. No objection to those things. The last thing I will show you, and I'll let the father add anything that he wants, but this sign there would be removed. I don't have, and, and granted, that sign is not in the same location as this sign, it's not as prominent there on Pacific Street. I don't have the dimensions of that sign, but that's a fairly large sign. So when you're talking about the total signage on the site, this nu- with that sign being removed and this new sign proposed at twelve feet tall, ninety-two feet in total area, y- you're not changing the total signage on the site very much. So again, I, the sign that was requested is very consistent, in my view, with the area, with the nature of Pacific Street there, with the nature of that intersection. And again, no objection to the other conditions that restrict its usage, um, its lighting, um, all of those things. The church just wants a, a bigger, a, a sign that's a little bit more prominent and gives them a, a way, using modern technology to display and share messages with their parishioners and community. So that's all I've got in case, unless you have any questions, Father, anything you'd like to add?
Um, I certainly appreciate gentlemen and Mr. Fanslaw, appreciate your listening to us and your consideration. And we're really not, we don't want this to be a huge sign that's flashy. Um, I like Big Fred's, but we're not gonna have a rotating sign or anything like that. Just a, a very positive message, it's good for the whole community, feeding the hungry, positive, good news messages, so thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
So. Name and address again.
I'm sorry, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, seventeen hundred Farnham Street.
Thank you, David. So, so if this, if the issue is the size of the sign, is there any compromise that would work for you guys? That might um work for the city as well?
It's a great question, and my belief in all of this is that that's where we always should start. In this instance, I am told, I'm not an expert in the manufacturing and purchasing of signs, but signs are made in certain sizes. And so this twelve-foot sign at the ninety-two square feet is actually a standard-sized sign, and therefore cheaper. The, the six-foot sign with the twenty-five square feet is a custom sign, and actually, even though quite a bit smaller, more expensive. Could you have a nine-foot sign manufactured? Probably so. Um, so I'm not saying no to your compromise suggestion, I'm just advising the board that, that there is a cost issue um that the church would bear with that kind of a sign.
Yeah, and it looks like, and if I'm looking at the dimensions correctly here, it looks like that twelve feet includes the very bottom of the base all the way to the top of the Saint Roberts name.
I believe that's correct, it is twelve feet truly ground to top.
Right. And it, and, and maybe there's a way to, you know, the name obviously is important to the church, right, Saint Roberts? But there's, if you're looking, I don't know if you're looking for more screen space or more dominance for the name of the church, or maybe, maybe you can compromise on both of those, but maybe is there a way to shrink the name plate, if you will, on that sign?
I would, I would think that we could, Dave, Dave Reason, uh, Saint Roberts Parish. Um, I think we could probably shrink the top or even the base of it. We still want, we just want it to be visible, so people driving by can see something of it. It's too small, you can't hardly see, so just a quick viewing when you drive by.
Yeah, and this, it's not gonna be, you, you, you're gonna have a message that's gonna stay up on the sign for a period of ten seconds, fifteen seconds, it's not gonna be a-
Right, right, it's not an advertisement, we're not selling anything, we're trying to proj- project. You know, we feed the hungry, there's free meal every week there. We take up collection for food, not just on Thanksgiving, every month we have a truck that we bring in. Uh, and maybe just people can partner with that. So it's sharing good news and inviting people to be, and even sharing messages for other synagogues and mosques, churches in the area, we can certainly do that.
Sorry to be waving around here, I was just trying to get the screen on again here. Here, here's a picture of the sign. Uh, Mr. Pay, you're, you're right, you could shrink that top part of it somehow. You would start to encroach probably on the screen part of it, which wouldn't be ideal, but um, I, I'm sure there's some, something that could be done there if, if that's the pleasure of the board. The, the six-foot sign with the twenty-five square feet area, like I said, this is, is really pretty small, especially with traffic moving that quickly, and I think it's important to take into account the sign that will be removed, and again, the nature of the area.
Yeah, and I, and I get your, your statement with regards to the R two zoning with that too. I mean, I, yeah, I'm very familiar with that area, and there's commercials on all three corners
Yep.
of that, and not that this is a commercial project, but um, yeah, I get that too.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so in the pre-meeting, we discussed some other church sites that we've had signage waivers. Obviously, this is not uh unique. Uh, we are looking at our sign code and, and whether those budgets and, you know, for churches and schools and the residential zoning, we definitely wanna increase. But there was a couple examples that we thought was very consistent with this recommendation report, we're not just pulling the numbers out of thin air, so um, for the benefit of this crowd, you know, I, I guess the two most applicable in recent past year or two, Seventieth and Cass First United Methodist Church of Omaha. Um, we supported electronic messaging, it increased from twenty-five square feet to forty square feet. I know the application came in with a seven-foot height and fifty-square foot, um, but that was adjusted by both this planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Then you do have Saint Philip Neary, um, on North Thirty Street in Florence. Um, and that was a request from twenty-five square feet to thirty-six square feet. Both of those for electronic messaging, which also includes the waiver, uh, that one did comply with height. Um, you know, I, I understand the idea about the residential zoning, I just looked up quickly if, if the property was zoned GO as an example, 'cause that's maybe the easiest one to, to calculate. Some of the other commercial districts, you have to know the amount of frontage and do multipliers, so that's not as easy to calculate. But if it was GO, uh, general office zoning, um, the MCC does allow a twelve-foot tall monument sign. The GO allows a sixty-square foot in budget, so the request before you is ninety-two square feet. So, you know, even if it was GO, it would be well beyond what's allowed by code for um the budget area. There are, um, I believe, three waivers that would be needed by the zoning board of appeals. Of course, when there is a conditional use permit or a major amendment such as this, uh, the zoning board cannot override this board's authority. So what you do support is what's allowed to go before the zoning board of appeals. Um, obviously, you heard David mention that there was a few other operating characteristics that we're recommending. Uh, some of those are turning it off at night, um, and then some of the performance standards, which are typical when we uh support waivers for electronic messaging. And with this being on Pacific Street, we, we definitely do believe there's a validity in supporting that electronic messaging. So um, we can get into any questions or specifics on, you know, the height and, and um, can do my best to calculate, you know, the budget and um, obviously, the, the electronic messaging is fairly easy to calculate when you get into the different letters and you start boxing around, gets a little more challenging to do on the fly. Um, but with that being said, staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly, uh, assembly subject to the ten conditions in the report, which includes those specifics talked about in the report.
So Eric, may I ask you a question? And with regards to maybe a follow-up, what I asked, um, Mr. Levy as well. Would the city be willing, assuming the rest of these recommendations, other than the size of the sign, would the city, would the city be willing to sit down with the applicant and talk about a compromise to the size of the sign?
We're always willing to sit down and, and have discussions. Um, if, if that's the guidance and, and vote that you give us, we absolut- absolutely will, we're always, always willing and-
Not that it has to be what they're recommending, but maybe somewhere that might not be so out of line, maybe what, what the city's-
Sure, and, and, you know, and part of the other couple of cases I mentioned, they don't have that signage on top of the electronic messaging. So both of those instances, it's just a screen. In this case, if you took off that top portion with the church name and the, and the logo or the, uh, the cross symbol, um, you know, it's a seven and a half feet in height, that's obviously much closer to, to the allowed six feet. But it is fairly wide, it's eleven and a half feet wide, which is really kicking up that, that budget.
Even then, it would still be higher than that allowed of what you had said before that gave up the exact number.
Yeah, so I mean, we've been, we've been consistent with, with the churches and, um, but yeah, I mean, we're willing to have conversations. There's not much room on the, on the bottom, unfortunately, there is an eight-inch masonry base requirement with the MCC, I think. Um, that's about eleven inches um shown as is, so. But yeah, I mean, we definitely could sit down and have conversation, I, I don't know if that changes the, the, you know, the recommendation at all, but-
No, I get it, I'm just trying, I'm just, you know, anytime we can find a way to deliver positive messages in the community, I'm always for that, and, and this is certainly one of those examples, I think, but uh, not that they wouldn't do the job anyway with the, with the sign, uh, that the city's proposed, size of the sign the city's proposing, but yeah, that's just my thought process.
Mr. Chairman, may I just comment on that?
Come on up, I'll call you back up.
Thank you. I appreciate it, again, David Levy, seventeen hundred Farnham Street. Just wanna share that the applicant is amenable to a layover today uh and going back and working with the city and trying to find something somewhere in the middle that, that would work for everybody. So if that's the board's uh direction, we would appreciate that and, and, and go back and work in good faith with the planning department and try and be back here next month with something we can all agree on.
So it just make clear though, so if there's a layover that's passed by this board, recognize it's not, not again, gonna be a guarantee that it's gonna come back with a-
Oh.
Right?
Yes.
You understand that?
Yes, no question, but we, and look, the, you know, hardest part of my job is to decide when to concede and ask for the layover, right? Um, but uh, no, in, in all seriousness, I appreciate Eric's comments and, and your comments, and um, we think there's something that we can probably achieve, and we're happy to give that a shot. And if not, it'll be a month later, and we'll be asking you again. But we'll have tried, and I do think that's worth doing and, and important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to layover. Kathy, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number three, case C three dash twenty-four dash fifty-eight. Applicant City of Omaha, request twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight consolidated plan and twenty twenty-four annual action plan. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, and Alyssa, you're up.
Good afternoon, Alyssa Selachek, Omaha Planning Department, and I'm here to discuss the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight consolidated plan as well as the twenty twenty-four annual action plan. So the consolidated plan is the city's five-year strategy for implementing our community development block grant, home investment partnership, and emergency solutions grant dollars in the City of Omaha. The consolidated plan includes several analyses, as well as the strategic plan, the annual action plan for twenty twenty-four, which is the first-year action plan in that five-year plan. And then the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and then our three neighborhood revitalization strategy area certifications are also attached to that document for HUD's review. Uh, the plan itself covers the period from January first twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first twenty twenty-eight. We did have a thirty-day public comment period from September twenty-seventh to October twenty-seventh of last year. The plan itself will be submitted to HUD following the announcement of our twenty twenty-four allocation, um, which we are still waiting on our federal budget, so once that information is available to us, we will finalize the plan. Uh, the action plan then is prepared for each year during the consolidated plan period, so I will return again in twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-four action plan, so these, as I mentioned, these allocation dollars are an estimate, subject to change, but we've based- subject to change, but we based our anticipated resources in the draft on our 2023 allocations. CDVG, we anticipated, or last year we received about $4.2 million. Homes annual allocation was about $2.3 million, and then the ESG program's allocation was about $384,000. So, within the CDVG program, we are proposing to complete about eight different activities with our CDVG funds, include infrastructure activities to extend Y Street between South Thirty First Street and South Thirty Third Avenue. It also supports the city's affordable housing preservation program, like our exterior repair program, for example. We are contributing to commercial building improvements and looking to create four jobs as a result of that, looking at job training programs from several different programs here in Omaha. Our demolition and code enforcement programs will address slum and blight within the community. We are also looking at homeownership counseling services provided by Family Housing Advisory Services. The home program, then, looking at 13 assisted or affordable housing units within the multifamily housing new construction program through a number of different programs. Also, looking at housing rehabilitation through the city's rental rehabilitation program, proposing to do five units there. Housing placements through the OHA TBRA programs also included, and then looking at ESG, we again are supporting emergency shelter operations at Santa Frances House and the Stevens Center, and then looking at the, supporting the rapid rehousing programs at Heartland Family Services and Together, and then HMIS support is also included. So, that is kind of roughly what the, what the plan looks like for 2024. We are available for questions and staff does recommend approval.
Just thanks for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Appreciate it.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing, additional comments? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, there's a lot of work that goes into these documents, and our Housing and Community Development Division does a great job with this every year, and so, want to thank Kelly, Alyssa, and Greg, who are here present, but there's also several staff members behind the scenes that put in a lot of time and effort and worked for these important programs for the City of Omaha. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pay?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Agenda item number five, case C3-24-88, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 1508 Marcy Tiff redevelopment project plan. Location, 1508 Marcy Street, and Don, you're up.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Satan, excuse me, Omaha City Planning Department. This project is located downtown, northwest of 15th and Marcy. Kind of an isolated site, it is presently vacant, there's a couple of old industrial buildings that were in bad shape, that were torn down not too long ago. The project involves the new construction of a four-story apartment building that will have 83 market-rate apartment units, and they'll be constructed on top of a single level of basically underground structured parking. The parking structure will have 46 stalls, there'll be another 26 stalls of parking available and developed on the adjacent rights-of-way. This Tiff project is located in an extremely blighted area, so it's a 20-year Tiff term. It's also in the influence area of the urban core housing and mobility district, so there will be a contribution of Tiff revenues from the project going into the streetcar construction. Total project investment is about $18.5 million. The Tiff support for the project is $2,442,131. The developer is 1508 Marcy LLC, which is a subsidiary of Urban Villages managed by Scott Semrad. This project is an appropriate land use for the area, it complies with our Tiff program requirements and is consistent with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Bob Griffith of Full and Camp Jovan Johnson Beller, 11440 Western Road, here on behalf of the applicant, 1508 Marcy LLC. My thanks to Don, as always, for presenting the project and working with us to get it to this point so far, I don't have a whole lot to add. Here for any questions, I would just add that it's about $131,000 worth of public improvements with this project, mostly in the right-of-way related improvements, so with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Bob. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing, additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so, this board and city council previously saw this for rezoning to TOD. It's a great project, adds density to the urban core, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Pay?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Agenda item number six, case C3-21-1, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval amendment to the Crossroads Tiff redevelopment project plan. Location, northwest of 72nd and Dodge Streets and Bridget, you're up.
Good afternoon, members of the planning board, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Just want to provide a few background details about this amendment, which is an amendment to the redevelopment of an approximately 42-acre site of the former Crossroads Mall. Excuse me, and I think you can see it in this aerial, 72nd Street, Cass Street here, Dodge Street here. This amendment does involve an expansion of the plan area to include the future site of the library at the southwest corner of 72nd and Dodge Street. So, the Crossroads Tiff redevelopment project plan, and then the new Central Public Library is right here. So, the plan area now involves both shaded areas. So, although the, it is a larger plan area, there will be two separate projects of the plan area, which is, again, the reimagined former Crossroads Mall site and then the Central Public Library, and each project will have its own separate funding. The Crossroads Tiff redevelopment project plan, so this area here, was adopted in February of 2021, and then the agreement for this particular Tiff project was passed by the city council in May of last year. This Crossroads mixed-use redevelopment project still proposes the same scope of work. And as you can see, it's residential, entertainment, office, hotel, retail, and some parking elements. The project is still master plan and community development law compliant, and a revised site plan will be coming back to this planning board in the future, because there are going to be some upgrade, updates to the, from the original site plan. There is a decrease in the proposed office square feet, slight decrease in the proposed entertainment square footage, and a slight decrease in the number of parking stalls, as you can see in the tables. Now, there is also an increase in density as a result of the residential units increasing by about 254 units, and that's a mix of senior living condos and multifamily. And then there's some, an increase in density of the retail component of about 141,000 square feet. The amendment proposes an increase in the Tiff loan by approximately $22 million, and that is to help fund a different parking solution for the redevelopment site. There is also a separate request for an increase in the EEA occupation tax by about $1.8 million, and also that is to help fund a different parking solution for the redevelopment site. I will, to go into the details of this amendment, particularly the expanded plan area and parking solutions, I will turn it over to Marco Floriani with the mayor's office, Jennifer Taylor may also chime in from the law department, and then David Levy with Baird Homes, representing the project owner, is here as well, and will give more details, and Woodbury, who, Woodbury Development Corporation is also here. So, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Bridget.
Marco's pointing at us, would you like us to come up?
Sure.
We should have rehearsed. Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnum Street, here representing Woodbury Corporation, who is taking the reins as the lead developer of the Crossroads site and has been working with the city on the reimagination of the site and the new parking plan that would benefit from and be supported by the requested increase in Tiff and EEA. I have here with me today Josh Woodbury, Josh Berger, and Walker Kennedy from Woodbury, and I'll ask them to come up, and we've got a brief presentation, and we're, of course, happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. My name's Josh Berger, I'm with Woodbury Corporation, 11204 Davenport here in Omaha.
Josh Woodbury, 2733 East Parley's Way, Salt Lake City, Utah. Mr. Chair, board, so, we represent Woodbury Corporation, which is a 105-year-old privately-held, family-run, commercial real estate business. We're headquartered out of Salt Lake City, Utah, but have offices in the Midwest. Being in business for over 100 years, we are diversified across geographies and asset classes, where we do commercial real estate, office, retail, multifamily apartments, and entertainment. And so, being involved with redevelopment of the Crossroads property is a strategy where we feel that we can thrive to add both economic impact for both private and public stakeholders. Our organization is, we're a full-service real estate company and have expertise in doing acquisitions and entitlement and development, as well as in-house law department, property management, tax and accounting, and finance that we do all in-house. So, we're experts in all things commercial real estate. We have owned property, owned and developed property in Nebraska now for 15 years, over eight properties that we developed or made a substantial investment to improve and reposition properties. And with Josh Berger here locally and kind of our experience in the Midwest, we're excited to kind of, to give an overview of the amended plan for the Crossroads property.
Thank you, Josh. So, this is our reimagined master plan. It's, when we got, when we got more involved with the project and our initial involvement with the Crossroads project was really going to be a single building, and as we sort of, the relationships evolved, we took a more active role from a development standpoint, and part of, one of the first things that we sort of thought through was, you know, the, how the parking was going to work for the development. And with the legacy garage occupying a prime corner, albeit not 72nd and Dodge, but 72nd and Cass, we felt like that, two things, one, that was a piece of real estate that has a higher and better use, and then the second piece was, just given the scale of the development itself, consolidating all the parking there became, it didn't create the type of walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment that we feel like is necessary for this type of location. So, we, our vision was to spread the parking out across the development, which you can kind of see here, and then the next piece was, again, given the scale of this project, we had to develop a strategy where we would create a phasing.
It'll focus.
Okay, thank you. Where we would phase the development in a way that made sense to, both from creating enough critical mass to attract the type of retail tenants, residential tenants, entertainment tenants, to have the project be successful from the shoot, but also not start the development off in some of the higher-valued piece of property, or the higher-value property off of Dodge Street. So, we got really creative with the naming of the blocks, so all of the existing infrastructure stays the same, the roads that are there are staying the same, we keep the grid, but the blocks are just A, excuse me, A, B, C, so on and so forth, so we've got Block B, Block D, and Block E are what we're considering Phase One. It's about 12 acres of the 42, it's just over a third of the site would be Phase One in the development. And this is a very first cut at kind of what sort of exploded view of Phase One would be. So, you can see Block B is sort of retail, residential on top of retail with a parking solution, our central green, which is a key piece for the development, parking below, and then Block D, although it's showing three parking levels, it's actually only two, just physically, only works with two, and that's kind of a walkout basement-type situation where the parking would come in on the west side and then on the south side.
So, just looking at that real quick there.
Yep.
Still don't have phones, mobile phones, but what happens, I see that's an app, phone app that's going to be used to access the paid parking, what if they don't have a mobile phone?
So, good question, and we'll work through that with the parking department on how that's going to work, ultimately, the city will manage that. This is kind of carried over from our master plan, and so, ultimately, the city and the parking authority will drive how the parking is paid, whether it's gates or application-based. So, from here, from our conceptual plans, it evolved into this. So, our local design partner, HBA, is responsible for the images that have been sort of made their way out to the media. So, we have our Block B to the north, you can see residential, multifamily surrounding, a parking garage, the parking garage is exposed on Cass Street, the white building is a senior living, planned senior living project, Block D is an entertainment facility, and then Block E is really our central, what we're calling our central green, becomes ringed with retail. Kind of skip here.
Have you had conversations with Target about, I mean, their parking is free?
Yeah.
So, how do you prevent somebody from parking for free over there and then just walking over?
It's a good question, it's actually something that we're working through right now with Target, yeah. So, these are some images that have sort of made their way out publicly, but we spent a lot of time trying to right-size what we're calling our central green. This is where the premier retail would be in the center of the development. The idea is you would come in, you would park on two decks below, and then all of the circulation would come up through the center, and so, the front doors, so to speak, of the retailers would be inside, and that creates sort of the activity kind of in the development area, or, excuse me, in the-
I understand you're right, the parking's below grade?
That's right. So, you can see, we're sort of envisioning these four light pillars that would pierce the garage, provide, you know, wayfinding into the lower level along with daylight. We imagine, we're imagining escalators circulating from the lower level to the second level up to the podium level, and that is really to speed along traffic, and it also provides a sense of security. And we've spent a lot of time studying the other sort of central green-type places in Omaha. Omaha, and trying to make sure that we're right-sizing this for what we're trying to do. We spent a lot of time thinking about programming and actually have people in-house that, all they do is program space like this. We know that activity and having activity on these type of areas is really important. And that kind of is the, our centerpiece. We really believe that this becomes almost a secondary anchor to the development for the, for the entire project. That's, that's my, that's our short presentation. Happy to take any questions you guys might have.
So, what is your, what is your phasing schedule? How are you going to determine when you go from Phase One to Phase Two? I don't know how many phases you're going to have, but how are you going to determine that?
The, the phasing schedule is really driven by the activity. And, you know, right now, this is what we, we have, like, the right uses and the right combination uses that are, we're teed up to move forward with. So, it's really activity, or use-driven, activity-driven. But we envision hospitality plays. We envision, you know, of course, the Dodge Street stuff, you know, is, is really the highest and best piece of the property there, so that would probably come later, unless there's a particular use that comes to, to us and it makes sense to move quicker. So we'll be nimble.
Yeah. So in Phase, let's say Phase, this is just an example. Phase One, you want to be utilized 80% before you maybe look at Phase Two, 90%? What?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right.
And what happens, so obviously, what happens if you don't get there? And this project's delayed more than what we would expect it to be? If you don't, and if you don't get the amount of absorption that you're looking for occupancy within that first phase?
Well, so on this first phase, so our multifamily is pretty straightforward, and that, and our, and our senior living's pretty straightforward. We're working with a large entertainment user that we have an LOI with. And so that, that's two, you know, two-thirds of the, of the Phase One. And then the retail piece, we have two LOIs with two anchor out-of-market restaurants that would anchor the corner of that phase, the center green piece. So, I mean, we feel like we have a pretty good head start on, on that occupancy, that absorption. So, of course, there's risk, but that's the business that we're in.
Did I understand you do your own financing then, too? You say you have finance?
We, we have, we, we don't do construction debt, but we line up the construction debt. Yeah, we have brokers for...
So, will your lender, does your lend, have you talked to your lender?
Yes.
I assume you have, right? To this point. So are they requiring a certain amount of occupancy or lease-up space or whatever you have before they will lend you the money?
Those details haven't been worked, those details haven't been worked out yet.
Haven't been phased. And you're going to have a hotel, I believe, as well as part of the concept in there.
Yes.
Are you going to own the hotel then? Because I think in our pre-meeting, you'd indicated that you were ownership partners in most of these projects. Are you going to own the hotel then, too?
That's a possibility. So, Woodbury owns and operates about 20 hotels?
Seventeen hotels. Two more, two more under construction here in Nebraska.
That you own and operate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, that's a possibility that we would own and operate the hotel, but we're open to, you know, if there's a better hotel operator that would have an interest and it makes the more sense, then we would, we would certainly consider that.
Okay.
Just if I might talk a little bit about the TIF request, too, just to, to make this clear. I know this is in the staff report and has been in the media, but I, I think it bears reiterating here. As Bridget talked about, there is an existing approved redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement for this site that authorizes about $80 million in TIF and about $65 million in EEA. What's before you today is an amendment of the redevelopment plan that better describes the proposed use of the Crossroads Site or proposed development, reimagining of the Crossroads Site, and adds the library site to the geographic boundaries of that redevelopment plan area. And then increases the TIF request and the EA, or the authorization for TIF and EEA. The entire additional amount of both that is before you today for recommendation is to be devoted to the parking structures that you saw, the underground parking structures and the above-ground parking structure on the site that the city would build, own, and operate, and operate the parking across the site, really as a cohesive parking district. Those parking facilities, of course, benefit the development. But that is the intended use of the additional TIF is to, for the city to use those funds in addition to operating funds. People come and park and they pay, to pay the debt service on those garages. The city has tools to do that. The city has the ability to manage this whole district cohesively, pricing different areas to, to make sure that people are parking across the site at those busiest times. So, Woodbury is not seeking this request directly for their use in the project, but rather, the city really is, of course, the applicant here. And the purpose of that request is to fund that parking, much of which is underground or structured, all of which is underground or structured, much of which is underground. It is more expensive, but it allows a more dense, more valuable development overall. So... Stalls are currently in the existing parking garage today?
It's about 3,000.
3,000? So you're losing those and trying to put those somewhere else? How many are going to be underground?
There's, each garage is about 600 stalls.
600?
Approximately.
So, parking, parking garages can be scary. Underground parking garages can be scary for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Right? And maybe this is a question for city, is, is how are we going to ensure safety with regards to, particularly the underground parking there?
Yeah, so, something we've been concerned about, particularly Jeff Woodbury, who's not here with us. So a couple of things that we've been thinking about that is... So, these, these columns that you see, these light towers that you see, just for a sense of scale, those are approximately eight foot by eight foot. And so then, below that are four, you know, 20-foot by 20-foot light wells that would go all the way from daylight all the way down to the lower level. So, that's the, an attempt to bring natural light all the way in. And then the escalators are also, provide a sense of safety that you have, that you don't have with, you know, riding in elevators or stairwells, of course. So, two ways, those are two intentional ways, design ideas that we're working with to provide that, that security. The ramps are, they're staged ramps. So they're speed ramps that come from the street down to the first level, from the first level to the second level, so they're straight in and straight out. But between the, the light towers and also become a sense of wayfinding once you're in the garage. So we imagine those connecting from the top all the way down. And the circulation, I don't have the plan, the parking plan, but Walker, the city's consultant, we've been working with them to, to work on the layout for the garage. And the safety's obviously a big thing, and, and we have why, extra wide, we're sacrificing some efficiency of the garage by providing extra-wide pathways for pedestrians, for strollers, for those sorts of things, to get to and from your stall to the escalators or stair towers.
I assume there'd be surveillance cameras also installed as part of the...
Again, that, that's really a management thing that the city would have to decide on, whether or not, how they handle that. But we would certainly be agreeable to whatever provisions the city would want.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you recap the Phase One one more time for me, just real quick?
Sure. Oh, yeah. So, so Block B is... Block B is residential on top of retail and senior living, and then structured parking kind of nested between the buildings. Block D is an entertainment facility. And Block E is really our, our retail block.
Got it.
It may be obvious here, but along, I think it's Chicago Street on Block B there, that's all fronted with retail, so that, too, is a pedestrian-friendly, active street. Even though it's back a little bit, that might be your, the tier of retail that's not quite, you know, ready for the rents on the Village or the Center Green. But the idea is to have all of those streets active in line with retail. And again, Josh said it, but I think it bears repeating, people have asked about it. The streets that are there now on the site that the current developer has installed are these same streets that we show here. And so the idea is to use their, that exact same grid and those streets and what Woodbury has designed so far here with their partners from Nelson Partners and Holland Basham uses that grid. So, yeah. I was just going to say, so, you know, one thing that strikes me about this is it's your, kind of your, it's a former shopping center that doesn't match the urban grid at all. And now, as reimagined, it matches the urban grid. You've got 74th, 75th, Chicago, et cetera, going through there. So it, it's much more consistent, I guess, with the historic development patterns of the neighborhood done this way as well. And gives it a finer scale that lends itself to pedestrians and that mixed use. You might go, you know, if you live there in the senior housing, you might go over to the Center Green and sit out in the sun, or do yoga, or go to dinner, or whatever it might be. And essentially, you're walking less than a block to do that.
And maybe I missed this earlier today, but Block B is residential, right?
That's right.
The entire residential?
And retail.
And retail. But the, is it the entire residential, the 1,277 units?
No, no.
So you're going to have another building?
Yeah, there'll be additional residential in future phases.
Okay.
So does Block B go all the way to 72nd Street then?
No.
No, no, no. So this is Block B here. What's, what's a little confusing about this image? This, this white building is a senior living facility that's been planned, and there'll be retail underneath here as well. So this, off to the, off the page? So, senior living, this is again modified from the Nelson plan, but multifamily, parking, senior. This is the existing garage that would come down. And then off to the west is just future developments site. Yeah, the white, the white squares are future phases.
And, and again, while we have this up here, Mr. Page, to your question about phasing, and Josh touched on this, but as you can see here, so Phase One is, is what's shown here. And Phase One is developed. You still have what I would call the two most desirable, most valuable development sites on the site left to go. And so when Josh talked about kind of starting in the middle and even toward the back, right? If you can, when you pull that off, then that lends itself and greatly supports development of the rest of the property. But now you're not trying to develop the stuff back in the corner. You've got 72nd and Cass, and you've got that frontage along Dodge. I mean, this is some of the most valuable commercial real estate between Kansas City and Denver, I would say. And I don't think that's hyperbole. And, and you've got two of the best sites on the site yet to go as part of Phase Two or even Phase Three.
Yeah, and I, and I've seen that happen. And that's great development, certainly. You want to save it your best for last, obviously, because you know it's worth a lot more, and so...
Yeah, that's right.
Makes sense.
Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office, here just to share the Mayor's Office support for this project and then the amendment before you today. So I want to thank you for the consideration. You know, it represents close to a billion dollars in urban infill, almost 40 acres of new development, you know, right on 72nd and Dodge. We kind of joke that's still considered main-in-main by a lot of people here in the city. And this project really catalyzes that transformation taking place, really making it, you know, some of the more productive tax-generating property in the city per acre after this project will be complete. The amendment, and it supports and helps facilitate the seamless integration of the mixed-use vision, so the, the commercial, the residential, the recreational, and the office. So it supports that generation, integration, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Marco. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close public here. Comments, questions? Eric?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I'm just here to answer any questions, if the board has any questions regarding any legal aspects or any other issues related to the project.
Yeah, I think we covered a lot of them, Jennifer, up in the pre-meeting, so, thank you.
I mean, what more can I say than, I mean, this is a very exciting project, to say the least, central core of our city. So, we're all excited as a city to, to see the progress as it moves forward. So, recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Page? Sir Longo? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Bridget. Gen. Item Number 25, Case C8-24-79. Applicant, Mental Health Association, request approval of a special use permit to allow transitional living in the G.C. District. Location, 6055 Country Club Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Casey Parker. I'm the Executive Director of the Mental Health Association of Nebraska, known more so as MHA. MHA has purchased a property located at 6055 Club, Country Club Road, which we plan to operate a transitional living home for individuals re-entering our community from the Nebraska Department of Correctional Services. The house has nine bedrooms and five bathrooms and sits on 2.2 acres of land. On February 22nd, we held a community meeting to discuss the concerns of the neighbors at Mount Olive Lutheran Church. Tessa and other MHA staff handed out over 300 flyers, and the meeting was well-attended. The meeting started out somewhat hostile, but after almost two hours of discussions, some of our neighbors, I think, had a change of heart and decided to support us. One neighbor offered to create a newsletter that would go out to neighbors that included the activities of the house, successes and concerns regarding the transitional home. The church offered their space to us to facilitate support groups, have community activities and functions. And we exchanged contact information with two neighbors, one that lives directly to, I don't know my directions, so, north of us, and then I believe one that lives another direction from us. And we plan to communicate with them often and just know, so they know who to contact if they have concerns, and we can address them right away. MHA has operated a four-bedroom respite house in Lincoln since December of 2009. And what started out as a five-bedroom home in 215, and now is a 20-bedroom home, is also located in Lincoln. That's a transitional home we also run. Lincoln Police Captain Mike Wolman is the captain of the southeast team, which is where our 20-bed home is located. And we have built an incredible relationship with him and his team. While we understand OPD is really busy, we do hope to do the same with them and the officers that patrol that area. I like to comment that Lincoln Police, just a week and a half ago, they come with donuts and they come and hang out with our, we like that because then they get to see people doing well and not always on their worst day. The house will be staffed 24/7, and supervisors will be available at all times in the event of an emergency. Programming such as trauma support groups, parenting classes, rent-wise, wellness recovery action plans, and peer support will be offered to all the guests of our house. MHA is also CARF-accredited, which is the Commission of Accreditation of Rehab, Rehabilitation Facilities. They have many domains, but just to name a few of them, we meet the standards in health and safety, leadership, legal, legal requirements, risk management... leadership, legal requirements, risk management, and financial planning. As I mentioned last time I was here, I'm not asking anyone to do what I wouldn't do myself. In two thousand seventeen, my mother was diagnosed with Alzheimer's and passed away in May of two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand eighteen, I had to move her into an assisted living home. I chose to move her into an assisted living facility, which is located directly next door to our twenty-bed home in Lincoln. My mom came over to the house often to sit with the guest and they were nothing but kind and supportive to her. I never worried about her safety. Can I promise that there will never be any incidents? No, I cannot. More than I can promise, there won't be incidents at the local bank, grocery store, or any other type of setting. I can promise you that we are intentional with the people we serve, the neighborhood, and our community partners. The goal is to show people reentering back into the society, and they are coming back, how to be good neighbors and not become a problem. It's to help them find a purpose in their own neighborhood and feel comfortable there. So I thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I think Tessa has a few additional comments.
My name is Tessa Dominguez with the Mental Health Association, address sixteen forty-five N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh three. I am the program coordinator for MHA's Omaha program, The Green House. Our aim is to work together with the stakeholders from neighbors to policymakers to build safer communities. So we do this by becoming contributing members of our communities and our neighborhoods. We are very much involved in our neighborhood associations at the other properties that we own in Lincoln. We show individuals firsthand the life that they could have for themselves and their families in relatively safe, drug-free neighborhoods. We are showing people how to value themselves and their communities through our actions as well as, like, a lot of the different programming that we offer that teaches people how to have a voice, how to be a contributing member of the community. Today, I wanna, I do wanna share a little bit about myself, as I am one of the individuals that MHA has supported in making those life-altering changes. I am someone that struggled with mental health my entire life and I did live in our state psychiatric hospital as a youth. I also struggled with addiction for nearly twenty years. I've been incarcerated and I've heard a lot of people in my life, including family and friends, but also the communities that I've been a part of, Omaha being one of them. Through the support that I received at MHA and the learning that I took from the groups that MHA offers, I have learned how to create a life for myself that isn't just void of these negative effects, but also a life that gives me full purpose. So since my incarceration, I have regained custody of my children. I'm also a grandmother, so that's new and exciting and fun for me. And I am an active role model in all of their lives, working towards breaking those generational cycles. I have children that are involved in the armed forces, children that are in college today, and they're not repeating the same choices that I or my future generations made before me. I'm also a homeowner and I have completed my Associate of Arts degree in business, but I'm also currently working on completing my bachelor's in business, in Business and Law at U N L. So I've been gainfully employed by MHA for nearly eight years and I'm a living testament to our programs. I'm not an anomaly. We have a lot of success stories that come out of our programs. And at MHA, we work closely with individuals to provide that individualized care. So we strive to create open and transparent dialogue so that we can have those tough conversations about relationships, education, employment, budgeting, these types of conversations that might be foreign to some of us and that can sometimes be hard to have. Through these transparent conversations, we discover new ways of being. I understand how inclusion and opportunity has made it so that I am no longer a detriment to the communities that I'm a part of. And I aim to provide the same opportunity to the people that we work with in Omaha. So I do also have a letter from Sheriff Hanson here at the Douglas County Sheriff, Sheriff Hanson, that I could read if you guys would like. I also had a conversation with him this morning discussing making several of his teams available to us if there were any issues that arise, if we had an inclination that there might be drugs in the house, that type of thing. They would offer their teams to come provide searches of the property and help us address those in a timely manner. What he has shared here is to the honorary members of the Board, over the past year, I have had an opportunity to interact with and learn more about MHA of Nebraska. I have taken an opportunity to travel to Lincoln, Nebraska, in order to do an onsite assessment of their Kia and Hanu transitional living homes. I have also had an opportunity to speak with my counterparts in the Lincoln Police Department as well as surrounding neighbors of Kia and Hanu homes. I'm extremely impressed in MHA's professional business model, their incredible success rate, and their consistent track record of being good neighbors and safe middle-class communities. As a twenty-eight-year law enforcement professional, many of those years spent in gang investigations and enforcement, I can tell you that Douglas County is in dire need of transitional living programs which operate at an exceptionally high standard that MHA, that operate at the exceptionally high standard that MHA operates. We need MHA and Douglas County in order to ensure a safer and more prosperous community in which cycles of crime and poverty are disrupted through real and safe transitional living opportunities. I have the unfortunate burden of knowing that many transitional living operations in Omaha operate counter to the very outcomes that we want. MHA of Nebraska is one of the best and we are fortunate that we are willing, we are fortunate that they are willing to expand to Douglas County and we should fully embrace them and their efforts. Respectfully, Aaron Hanson. That being said, the other thing that I would like to additionally offer or that I'd like to add is that this year, we've had a lot of changes, one of which is the reentry initiative of two thousand twenty thirty that our governor and the Director of the Department of Corrections have signed off on and decided to be a part of. They did put a proclamation out earlier this year as their attempts to be a part of that. And that, the initiative addresses the need for successful transitional services and also addressing the issue of the overcrowding in our prisons. So with that being said, we are looking to see a lot more people being released from the Department of Corrections. And we already felt that this was a need that is underserved. It's gonna become even more so, we project, in the next several years. In regards to some of the city planning things that came forward for us, two of the ones that I would like to discuss is the, there was a request for sidewalks and trees. I'd just like you guys to remember that we are a nonprofit. So funds that we receive are already allocated to places that they can go. And these types of structures, you know, cost a lot of money that we don't necessarily have budgeted for. And so I just wanted to bring that about. And then, I don't know if there's anything additional, Casey, that you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so. We, I'd be happy to, I mean, as the Director, I, we do have funders that support us and I can write grants if I could find some that support sidewalks and trees. I would be happy to do that, but at this time, I don't have any dollars that are allocated for those specific items. Yes.
We do. Uh, December was the, was the final purchase, wasn't it?
No, we, we signed in February.
In February, okay.
Okay. And did you pay fair market price for?
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did.
We got, we had a local foundation here that donated quite a bit of money.
That's what I was wondering, okay. And then, and why this location? Why did you decide this was the location?
I guess it was your, from your guidance, a lot of it, to be, find a commercial or seven zoning area. That was all, so we didn't have to request rezoning. And it is large enough for the purpose of what we wanna do. It's also, it's, I don't know Omaha as well as some of these others, but the neighborhood, there's a church and we like to be, like I said, we like people to experience a neighborhood with neighbors and that they can walk out and not necessarily be tempted every time they walk out of the house. It's really important for them to see people mowing their yards, taking care of their kids. Those things that come, we take for granted, that we see often in our neighborhoods. A lot of folks that we serve didn't grow up seeing that. And so it's really important that we stay in well-established neighbors, neighborhoods with the support of the neighbors. And that's why, I can see a few of them here, you know, that's why we did go out and talk to them. And that, that's why we chose the location. It was available, it had space, and we like being able to be around the church.
And obviously, it's very good that you go out and talk to your neighbors. And you had indicated earlier that during those conversations, that you think you won some over to your...
Maybe. We hope.
So, so the question is, is what were their concerns? And then what do you think you presented them that would change their minds to win them over, as you stated?
I think for me, so first of all, additionally, to address your last question, some of the other things that we look at is like bus routes that are close to us, banks, grocery stores, places of work, those types of things, we're all taking into account as well. Where this isn't, it's in a neighborhood, but yet we still have access to the things that people need to, when they're, you know, restarting life. I think part of it was the idea that, one, we're here and we're open to hearing what neighbors have to say, like, and I know I've shared this with some of them already, like, I want to hear what their concerns are. I want to know what their fears are because I'm hoping that together, as a community, we can work towards addressing those. And what can, what else can we do that would help you feel more secure? I think the largest concern, I think from, that I heard, was the population that we serve. And, and there was a concern that there were schools in the area. And we did assure neighbors that, that we do abide, I mean, there are state regulations that are put in place for people with certain specific charges, where they can live, where they cannot live, those types of things. Obviously, we have to abide by those regulations. Parole and probation have to approve plans before people can even come to live in our house while they're under that type of supervision. They take a close look at those types of things as well. And then just knowing that we are available to them. In the three hundred letters and flyers that I handed out, my cell phone number is in every one of those, you know, and my email. And so just to, just to say that, like, we're available. I've also fielded phone calls from several of the neighbors that weren't able to make it to the town hall meeting that called me prior that said, hey, we're not able to make it. Here are some of the questions that we have, and walked through some of those things as well.
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns as, close to being as close to the school as well. So do you, do you house any sexual predators?
So...
Predators, no.
No, so again, we work with law enforcement on this and so there are classifications of certain folks that cannot be in areas close to schools, daycares. And so anytime, again, parole and probation would not approve for them to be, I can't say anybody on the registry will be denied. It depends on the classification and what their crime was. If it involves children, then, then that, they most likely would not be able to come to our house. But there are laws surrounding all of that.
Who vets that?
Well, there's the state laws that, that obviously are set in place for people on the registry. They're made aware of what their rights and responsibilities are as being on that registry. That also dictates where they can live and where they cannot, and those things are not up to us. So there's a couple, so, so, one, the state puts regulations in place for people that are on the registry to be informed of, and then if they're in violation of that, there then criminal charges that could be brought against them. As far as the people that come to our house, if they are on supervision, we would have to, like, we would have to approve them first. That plan would be submitted and then parole and probation would review the plan and then make the final decision for their individuals as to whether or not this was the right placement for them.
We've, we've also had it where maybe somebody comes out and they're not on supervision and they may have a background. And we have such, like I said, I'll have to do that here in Omaha, but in Lincoln, I have contacts who I can call L P D. They, they have access to case records and know the history of the individual that I am not allowed to see, but they can help us determine if it was, if it was a child crime or an adult and what the circumstances and the ages and all of that to determine if this is a good fit.
We also have really close working relationships with the reentry team at each facility. So as individuals are leaving facilities, they work with the reentry team that's assigned to that facility and we have very close working relationships with them. So usually, we're made knowledgeable of any concerns or red flags that might come up in any regard, not just in this regard, that we might wanna take into consideration as we're approving people for the list. They are very transparent with us. We do, and we have programs that happen inside almost every one of our facilities, except for the work ethic campus, the only facility that we're not in. So a lot of the people that apply for our programs, we've had years to establish relationships with through other programming that we facilitate inside. And then again, like I said, we work closely with the reentry team that also shares what they can with us, but they do have pretty transparent conversations with us about...
So this is in terms of this decision, but what, I'm just curious, what is your follow-up with these people, once they graduate, so to speak? Or are they just dumped out or is there somebody else that helps?
No, so there's, we are, our services are available to people for as long as, I mean, we're always gonna be there to provide support, right? We have, our programs offer both community programs as well as Department of Correction programs. For the Department of Correction programs, those are available to people within eighteen months of their release from their number. So if I'm on parole for five years, then it's five years plus eighteen months that I'm eligible for our DOC-funded programs. And then we also work closely, this contract specifically, with Metro Community College's one eighty wrap program. They'll be providing a lot of additional wraparound services. I have gone out and met with several of the other, not just the V L S, which is our Vocational Living Skills Grants. I've worked, we've talked and worked with several of the other grantees of that that provide these types of services, as well as I've gone out to other organizations in the community, handed out my business card, explained, you know, what we do and in hopes of being able to collaborate with other community partners as well.
Is it an open, open campus? Can, can your guests come and go as they please?
Yes.
So at all hours of the night, so it's open, in case they have a night job or something?
Right.
They can come and go?
Right.
How, how are they monitored, that they're going where they're supposed to be going? And, you know, they're not doing something they shouldn't be doing while they're out?
So parole and probation, one, will determine if somebody is at the level that they need to be monitored by an ankle monitor, so that's one source. We have had parole come to us and say, hey, this individual's monitor was going off in an address that we maybe have some concerns about. Can, can we search their room? You know, and we followed up on those things, so that's one method. The other thing is, is that our house is twenty-four hours staffed, so we do have working staff there around the clock. There's a sign-in, sign-out form on the house, so we know when people are coming and going, as well as there will be cameras on the outside of the property, kinda monitoring if there's any funny business happening within our vicinity there. And then also, like, because of our model with the intentional peer support, we work really closely to get to know people and to get to know, like, their patterns of behaviors and that type of thing. And that's some of those uncomfortable conversations that I said that we have. If we start to see a change in behavior, no matter how small it is, we talk about that. We check in, we make sure things are going okay. And because of our lived experience, generally, we know what those things look like pretty early on, right? Because we've also been down that path or been on that journey and can, can detect those things pretty quickly. So I think that's really attributed to a lot of the success that we've had in the programs that we already have running, is that peer aspect and that being able to address things right away.
With your system, what is the return rate, I guess, back to the penitentiary or jail? Do you have a number that you've kept track of over the years?
Yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't know necessarily, once they leave and they're, you know, in their permanent housing, I guess is what. If they catch or get other charges, then we wouldn't have access to that information unless we see them again back in the inside. I do know that for both of our places in Lincoln, Captain Mike Wolman has offered to speak to anybody because we sit, like I said, on his, in his area. And we have never had a violent or assault or, you know, any kind of incident like that. The worst that we have done is found drugs and then we work with them to get it taken care of. Also, probation and parole come weekly to the house. And so we can, again, go over, like Tessa said, any concerns. Our main goal, we, we want the neighbors to be happy, we want them to like us, we want them to support the people and break the stigma of those people coming out. And so our, our main goal, I get very concerned if we have calls for service from law enforcement because I don't wanna be that place. We don't wanna be the sore spot. And we're not. In Lincoln... Um and we're not in Lincoln and we anticipate we will not be in Omaha either. We do, however, like I said, like it when they stop by and bring us donuts.
I think it gives us the opportunity when we work as closely with law enforcement as we do, that some of us that have had those interactions with law enforcement in the past that aren't so favorable. To get the opportunity to s- to have those interactions from a different place, kind of defeats that stigma of that us versus them. And rather, we can start to support or like trust in our systems again and um and the safety measures that those bring rather than fearing what those might bring into our lives.
How many staff members do you typically have, would you anticipate having at this location?
So it, we like our ratio to be one to four, one to five overnight, it might be one to seven. But if we do have more than, I mean, our occupancy permit will go in for, it's a nine bedroom, if we can, we most likely won't have. Nine, because I anticipate we'll use an o- uh one or two of those rooms as office space. Um but yeah, we like the one to four, five during the day and 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 then sometimes a little less in the evening on the overnight shifts. But there's always a person on call i- in a supervisory position and, yeah. And then we we also have people who once lived at the house, left successfully, and then they want to come back and not necessarily work for us, but they want to volunteer. So then we have volunteers on site as well.
And of all your visitors that you that you get in your facilities that you've had experience with, how many of them actually complete the full sixty or ninety day program?
Yeah, the the University of uh UNO keeps track of all the data for us and so I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. I know that our employment rate was eighty-four point six, I have no idea why I remember that one, but I I I know our employment rate was really high.
So you found employment for eighty-five percent of your?
Yes.
Okay, that that was another question I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, I know that our number transitioning out successfully is at a similar rate. And the reason that I can confidently say that is because the Nebraska Department of Corrections has funded our program since twenty fifteen. And if we weren't successful, they would have not funded us anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Did you want to come speak or? As a proponent? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
You're in favor of the?
Yes, no, when it first, I'm Jolene, I'm Jolene Dome, sixty-one oh eight Country Club Road, I'm about two hundred feet from this house, so. You know, but uh when we first got the news, we go, oh my God, not in our neighborhood, you know, threw our hands up. And I was on television saying that. But anyway, after the town meeting, I did get educated, which was good. And my concern was, so, you know, I'm eighty, gonna be eighty-one years old, I live alone. What if I encounter somebody outside, you know? I mean, that's my problem, and and is there enough staff to help? You know, get people back, and you're half a block from school, these kids are gonna be walking in front of your building, you know, grade school kids. That's my concern, that's all. I hope it works out, I really do. Omaha needs it.
Thank you.
I'm old enough, I don't care.
Any other proponents? That wanted to come down?
No, okay. Were you a proponent, sir?
Name and address, please.
Wait till the meetings or we'll come with you.
Sherry Worth.
Hold on.
Forty-five forty-six Seward Street.
What was your name?
Sherry Worth.
All right.
Forty-five forty-six Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I work in the reentry field and I am very familiar with MHA. Um I think it is one of the, I have previously worked with the Nebraska State Probation. So I have seen many of our transitional homes, many of the places that we send individuals to who come out of incarceration. Um and I agree with Sergeant Hanson, um the main goal isn't primarily what it should be. I watch MHA change lives and do it the right way, not just set it up on the fly. You know, they take the time to speak to the neighbors, they take the time to do everything correctly. And I think what I hold nearest and dearest to my heart is I am duly diagnosed, um I do have a past criminal history. Um and I was thinking when I came out of county, there was nothing like that, right? There was Richard Young, but I was a single mom at that time who was involved in a domestic relationship. My husband was in um also in county for charges against me and my children. When they took me in, I wasn't sober, so I had nowhere to go with my kids, right? I couldn't go to a safe house or a shelter because I still wasn't sober. You know, I hadn't proven my sobriety upon release. Um and at that time, Richard Young was still around, which sad to say, it's not. So being in that field and live in that, I think, you know, we don't have nothing for people like that. You know, I had nobody to show me the way, I was very blessed, um with some amazing people that were put in my life. But there was nowhere to go to address the mental health, and when I stayed sober, um you know, I couldn't afford it, I was a single mom working as a waitress, I didn't have insurance, I couldn't do it, right? Um to help address the trauma I had experienced, the trauma my children had experienced, and to reach out to people in that same, who had the same concerns as me. Through that, like I said, I did do well, I um had the opportunity to go to college, I had now my associate's degree, I have my bachelor's degree, I am a homeowner. And I also worked for Nebraska's um Department of Probation for eight years. And now I work with one of the vocational life skill programs that work very closely with MHA. We do um through the one eighty Ranger Resistance Program, we offer the basic needs and we do education, we also help them look for work. And um I can say through the sixteen years I've done this. And worked through all the transitional housings and did searches with the OPD and went in and met with people and worked with probation and parole. I have never seen a home that does what MHA does. The care and the concern, the concern about the community, it's not about the money, there's so many out there now about the money, and that's not what they're about. And I couldn't say good enough things, that we do need this in our community, I agree with Sergeant Hanson very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Just second, hold on, sir, did you want to come up?
Okay, my name is Ralph Moore, some of veteran, uh we have a s- or.
What's your address, Ralph?
Oh, my address is sixty-one oh-two Country Club Road, we're right across the road.
Okay.
Uh and what makes me concerned, we have a son that is in jail now, it's up here in Omaha, but he was down in Lincoln. And they turned him loose down in Lincoln, and I would never found out if I hadn't have talked to Sheriff Hanson. Without um anything on him or anything else, and he's supposed to be turned loose. Well, he wasn't supposed to have been turned loose, he had no bracelet on his leg or anything else. Luckily, we have a district attorney over here that got her head on straight. Had the police come and pick him up, and that's what I, the only thing that worries me about it, and I'm all in favor for this. I just hope that they have some way of protecting us from this. Cause I, he's, oh, he'll be hopefully in jail again now for twenty years again, but I just. So that's, but I I'm in favor of it. Cause I look at it this way, I'll have somebody help me shovel my sidewalk.
All right, thank you.
And I can give them stuff to help them over there with their b- building too, so.
Okay. No, she didn't want to come up. Go ahead, co- if you can make a quick comment.
One more question.
Name and address again.
Jolene Dome, six one oh eight Country Club Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Is this gonna be men and women both? Okay, that was my concern, in in the same facility, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope they can cut grass.
Okay, seeing no other proponents, are there any? Okay, we're gonna get there. Do we have any opponents? Come on forward, give your name and address.
Sixty-six twenty-seven Country Club Lo- Road, I woke up.
What was your name again?
Stacy Jackson. I'm at sixty-six twenty-seven Country Club Road, I've lived there, my parents built their dream home there. I'm relocating back from Washington DC, I've been a social worker for over thirty years. So I know as change agents, um and how social ills are getting worse, they're not getting better. But I'm really concerned um that I asked all my neighbors and nobody got a flyer, nobody got anything, and then I see it on the news. And this house was purchased and all my neighbors on sixty-six and Starlight, they don't know anything about it. So I walked at every single house on my bro- block because my father was so livid. To find out why they picked this house, why they picked this neighborhood, there is enough transitional homes in North Omaha. I work in them. I'm not saying that people cannot change their lives, but I just felt like it just wasn't. I felt like everything went through the back door. And I'm like, would this happen out west? I don't know. But North Omaha, I mean, I would like to see more transitional when it comes to that Target mall, more healthy restaurants. I mean, no more O'Reilly's, no more car washes, now they're talking about a transitional home. So I'm really about community, but I'm about community that's in the right way. I have no problem with nobody changing their lives, uh their message is very clear, I agree with all that, but I'm, that house used to be a foster home. And the family that lived there, they had ten, eleven kid, I mean, they did well. But I guess they sold it, the house was sold and it was, I guess, whoever tried to buy it, it didn't go through and then the house went back up for sale. And they're saying that they bought the house in February, we didn't know anything about it. The old riches who are my two door, my neighbors two doors down, they had no clue and they're very involved in the community. So a lot of our neighbors are a lot older, they're a lot golden. But that's my concern as a taxpayer, my parents building their home, property value. That's where I'm at right now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other opponents?
My name is Lawrence H. Coakman, I live at sixty-eight twenty-five Country Club Road. First of all, I admire you guys sitting here, you must not drunk much coffee. And you've dealt with billions of dollars and hundreds of lots, we're down to one, one lot. On the corner of uh Sixtieth and Gerard. And that home was turned into some type of uh help home. Which is fine, but it didn't work, they put it up for sale, they couldn't sell it, so they found somebody that would buy it. At a high price with needing lots of repairs. So that was the motivation for that house. The ladies that presented here have rose colored glasses on, they're nice people, they've benefited from this system that's there. And and we need this, our church, our church is gonna turn our parsonage into one of these type homes. But it's in a commercial area. This house is totally surrounded by family homes with a school a short block away, about a half a block, a school. We're gonna put criminals in there and recidivism is high. If you get one out of three, you did pretty well. And I guarantee you, the neighbors are not for it. The reason many aren't here is it's workday. Some of the older people can't make it. And there's great hostility to this, one of the people at the meeting the other night. Said he'd solve the problem, they show up in his place, he's just gonna blow them away. So there's going to be an incident, probably when these people go back to where they came from. Drugs, alcohol, that fuels so much of this and is a sad part of our society. Don't let them put this in the middle of a neighborhood with a school there, cause it will happen. We've had a murder up on the end of our street at a party house, everybody knows it's a party house. And God bless the police, I'm a big supporter, they can't seem to stop it, what goes on up there. We have commercial businesses operating out of homes in our area, that's against zoning, nobody stops it. So now we're gonna put criminals into the neighborhood that have a known percentage of recidivism. And I understand alcoholism and drug use, not so much drug use, my father was a hardcore alcoholic. Three ti- it took him three times to dry out. I understand that and God bless them for doing it, and I want them to do it, but not in a neighborhood. Where people are living and there is a school a short half block away. It only takes one person, one person to have that incident. Or on the other side of it, one person who is highly fearful, who has a gun, to have an incident. And that's what we're asking for, I'm asking you on behalf of the neighbors, and I have talked to many. Not to do this, some of them are feeling hopeless, that they feel it's being jammed down on them and that they have no choice. I believe we have a choice, that's why I'm here, I thank you for your time, I thank you for your efforts. And I, we would plead with you just not to let this happen in our neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Did you have something else?
I'm sorry, I had called the mayor's hot.
Ma'am, we need your name and address again.
Oh, Stacy Jackson, six-six-two-seven Country Club. Road. The house that he's talking about. They bought this house that the people that lived there were elderly and they moved. And we were wondering what was going on, the house was getting remodeled, remodeled, you know, like, you know, people buy houses that are, need to be remodeled, whatever. And next thing we know, they got this huge big parking lot in front of the house. And then they had a pa- they had a party and evidently a fifteen year old of the son of the the owner killed somebody, it's been on the news.
Are you talking about this house?
No, no, I'm talking about the house that's on my street on Country Club.
Let's stay here on this house.
No, I'm just saying as reference to what he was saying, that the commu- you don't have any control over who your neighbors are. But you do have control if it's consi- if if it's a transitional home, you don't have any control of your neighbors, things happen, we know that. But like you said, there's commercial, there's people that have businesses and they should not be having businesses inside their home. Oh, sorry, okay, but I'm just. Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Uh Casey or Tessa, did you want to come up and?
So I guess we'll just hopefully briefly.
Need your name and address.
I'm sorry, Casey Parker, sixteen forty-five N Street in Lincoln. Um as far as both men and women being there, so what we will do as we have the models in Lincoln. Each bedroom will get a locked door and a key, so it is their room and they have access to it and they. And they, then there'll be a set of guidelines. And we call it a guest agreement that they agree upon and the rules that they will follow in the house. The property value, that comes up a lot. And actually, our house on Fourteenth and Van Dorn in Lincoln, because we, we had funding, we had another local foundation, put a lot of updates, remodel, landscape, deck off the back, those types of things. We were, that, that property value actually raised. And the Lincoln Police Department stated that calls for service went down at that location, not up. Also, that was concern of the neighbors at our other house. But again, that has not been the case in the fifteen years that we've been doing this. We have not brought property values down. And as far as the comment with people not being notified, I know Tessa's gonna touch more because she actually did it. But there was an individual in there who was part of the neighborhood, who informed us that he was concealed and carry and was a very good shot. And it was very scary. And I felt very uncomfortable in that meeting for a minute, so. Yes.
Told us that he was a great shot and so was his wife.
Yeah. And so it wa, it was scary. But I, and I think the concerning part is, you know, they're displaying behavior that they're afraid we're going to. And so that was very scary for a minute to know that he was, probably had a weapon on him and talking to us that way, so. But go ahead.
Yeah, so just to.
Tessa, we'll need your name.
Sorry. Tessa Dominguez, sixteen forty-five N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six-eight-five-oh-three. Again, just to address that, yeah, it's, it's kind of that, like, we're concerned of the people that have committed these charges, but I'm going to threaten you with similar charges was, didn't make a lot of sense to us. And was a little, is disruptive, I would say, at the least. But two of the things that I wanna talk about is the flyers. So three hundred flyers, door-to-door, that's a lot of footwork, right? I don't have an Omaha team yet, so it was me. I used the house as the central location. And then I tried to work my way like down Gerard Street, down Country Club Road, hit the neighborhood and the road that wraps around behind us, get across Sixtieth Street and hit that community as well. It was a lot of footwork, so much so that I made my teenage boys come up and volunteer to help knock on doors with me on, on a Saturday. So, so if there, if we didn't get quite as far as some of the neighbors would have liked to have, I apologize. We did talk about this in the community meeting and, and the woman from Ola Crest Church had mentioned, like, you can go and get like these mailing thing. I wasn't aware of that. She's going to teach me how to do that for any future notifications that the community might need so that I can reach more people and not go door-to-door sticking flyers in their doors if they're not answering. In regards to the house needing a lot of work, so I will let you know, like, that was part of like the negotiation process of this property and what took so long is we did recognize some of the work that the house did need. We have already started the inspections for those things. And actually have found out that it was a lot less than we had originally anticipated. But we do, I'm, I've already started the inspection process. I have electricians scheduled to come out next week. We are, have conversations going with heirs and heirs to get grading done around the property. Some of those types of things. So there are, as far as the work that needs to be done, I've already started the process on, on bringing that house up to, to what it would need. Not to mention that as we go through the occupancy permit, which we have at every house that we have, they'll also have requirements of us of, of what is expected and needed for the property that we'll meet. Again, we've already started a lot of those processes. And, and the, the part, of course, I'm not super knowledgeable on the long history of the house. What I understand about the long history of the house is that it has been used as this type of service for a long time, that it was group home living, I believe for youth was the previous use. It was like a, a group home transitional living for youth. It was, we bought it from another nonprofit that did the same type of, of work here with youth. And so I don't know if that addressed all of their questions, but I think maybe got to some of them.
You may have mentioned it earlier. How many people attended that meeting you had?
We didn't do like a sign-in or anything, but we used, I don't know, maybe forty? Yeah, yeah, maybe forty people is what I was thinking, so. It was a full room, yeah.
Is, what are the ages of the residents of the house that you would have? Is it all ages or is it predominantly younger people or?
Anybody nineteen and, and over. I mean, just like, it, it would be comparative to the age range of the population that you would see inside the Department of Corrections, right? Those are the same individuals that are coming out, so the population would be comparable to that.
Would you generally classify these individuals as grateful they're not in prison, determined to turn their life around? They don't wanna stay there longer than needed, I would assume.
Yeah.
Would you agree?
I would, I would, I would definitely agree with that. And part of our selection process takes some of those things into account. So we don't do a wait list where it's just like, well, you're the next name on the list, you can come to the house. We, first of all, this list got so long that we couldn't manage them and it wasn't an effective way to do things. So we started doing an interview process. People submit their application to us through the reentry services at the Department of Corrections. Like I said, most of them, we've already had the opportunity to get to know and develop relationships with. Our staff has that work inside the prisons. And then we do an interview. So we have a few, select number of staff that are assigned to each facility to go out and do interviews. And based off of that interview, it becomes then this mutual agreement of the individual coming to the house, feeling like this is a type of support that they feel like will be most supportive to them in their transition. Our model is a very specific model. And, and then the mutuality and that comes in and is, is in us. Also mutually feeling like this individual is a good fit for the type of program and service that we provide. And I, again, I think that attributes to, to the success and lack of outburst or, you know, those types of things that we see in our programs.
I wanted to add just a little bit because you, I mean, I've seen it where we hand them the key to their room and they open the door. We had the community do what we called a recovery room redo challenge where they decorated the room and then we had a competition with an interior designer and it, we made it fun. But when we hand the key to them, I've had them cry because first of all, some of them have never had a bedroom to themselves. We don't double bunk, we are not in it for the money, we're not shoving a bunch of people in one room. I've also had them tell me that they've never had a bed off the floor. And so this gives them, you know, I know, like, I heard the gentleman state several times that we should be in a commercial area. But that's, the goal is for them to understand what it feels like to be in a safe, comfortable environment, to understand that they deserve that and to, to experience what it's like to have a healthy home. And that's what helps people change it around.
I, I think that, like, it's very common for us to hear, we support these programs, just not in our neighborhood. And I just wanna point out that, like, I mean, we, we didn't target the specific neighborhood or the specific house. I spent a year, it was almost a year ago to date that I saw you guys the last time. I spent a year trying to find a property that was zoned right, that had enough bedrooms for the services that we were trying to provide. You know, we moved from leasing to purchasing because of the requirements from the Fire Marshal's Office of needing a sprinkler system put in, which is not a cheap thing. And to find funding to do that into a leased property was impossible. So, so it wasn't like a targeted, it was the, all of these different things that we have to meet. This property happened to, to check all of those boxes. And again, because, because it is in a neighborhood and we do want to teach people how to be a part of community, like, how, how do you know what you don't know? If nobody's ever taken the time to show you how to be a part of a community or you've never had that opportunity, then this is the opportunity to do that. I, I joke a lot and I think I shared this at the, at the community meeting, that when I was in, first in recovery, I thought a neighborhood association was like the people engaged in communities that told you like how high to cut your grass, right? Come to find out, that's absolutely not what they do at all. That's like what, HOH or something like that, which I also don't have. But I am a member of my neighborhood association today and I understand the value of it as a homeowner and being a part of that community. And those are things that I was taught through, through MHA.
I'm gonna cut you off.
Yeah, no, you're good.
We've gone quite a while, so. Alright. Any additional comments or questions? I'm gonna cut it off, Lauren.
Yeah, so obviously with this use type, small group living, large group living, use types, there are supplemental zoning code criteria that are in place. It was a very thorough application. We do not need any follow-up of those materials, which, you know, we appreciate the thoroughness and the applicant working hard on that application, making sure that we know what's going on and, you know, who's living at this facility. So that was a good job. You know, Tessa had talked about taking flyers around to three hundred properties. So Nebraska State Law and our, our zoning requirement, we notify property owners within three hundred feet. So, you know, several people got notices. But that, that's twenty-seven properties who we notified, as Mike just told me. So I do think there's, you know, an effort to, to really get out there and, and that's important. And I think those conversations need to continue. And if the board, however this vote happens, if it proceeds to council, there's more time for those meetings and conversations and engaging council members and, and just continuing that dialogue. So we encourage that all the time with facilities such as these and neighborhoods. Because yes, we do see, we do see opposition for, you know, these types of uses. And it's difficult. We obviously want safe neighborhoods, safe environments. So strongly encourage the, you know, the applicant to, to do what they, to do what they say. And, and we do believe that would be the case. So, you know, whether that's conversations with the principal of the school, whether, you know, whatever precinct or police department that, you know, this site is in, which is zoned commercially, it is general commercial. You know, I don't know the origins. I think it's been zoned that way probably since the original group home, when it was done in the early nineteen nineties. So we do have a few recommended conditions. I know that they brought up the concern about the sidewalks. Anytime there's a site that is in non-conformance, we try to bring it up closer to compliance and we think installing sidewalks is important. Now, you know, we can continue to work with them on the timing of that. And, you know, if there's any resources or, or foundations that we can get them in contact with, that, you know, maybe they could seek funding. Where, you know, we can, we can do the best that we can to help with that effort. But we do think that's important to remain as a condition. And the planting of two trees along each street frontage, we think that's, that's doable. So unless there are any specific questions, we do, one of, one of the conditions, we are support, we are recommending that the site, the property be rezoned to R six. So that would, you know, eliminate the commercial zoning. There are many commercial uses that could go on this property right now that, you know, I'm not sure if, if the neighborhood is fully aware that they could tear down the house and build commercial with building permits and not seek anything from planning board or city council. But we think the R six zoning is more appropriate to fit in with the neighborhood. Now, if that happens, there would be another notice that comes from our department to come before this board. So if it is voted in that way, just be aware that there's another rezoning. We're not gonna get back into the specifics of the use permit. Basically, that would be a condition of, of this one. We do have a typo on the number of conditions. There are six conditions in the report, so I apologize it lists five, but there are actually six listed. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow a transitional living facility on the property subject to the six conditions in the report.
Just before I ask for a motion, this does move on to the city council. So anybody that wants to say more, they have the opportunity at the city council.
Good point. The staff's recommendation report is a recommendation to the planning board and city council. The planning board's vote today is a recommendation to city council. Ultimately, that body is who has ultimate authority on yes or no.
Do we have a motion?
Before we make a motion, I'd just like to make a comment. I just wanna recommend or commend you on the success of your programs. And these are vital services that we need for, for, for our neighbors that have fallen afoul of law. The ideal for, for all of them is to bring them back into productive residence within our communities. And so I thank you for that and I thank you for your diligence to a program that works. And with that, I'll recommend approval of a special use permit to allow transitional living facility on the project, on the property subject to the six conditions in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yeah, just before I go, just wanna congratulate you on your program. I think it's a great program. I think you provide a valuable service. I'm gonna vote no and the only reason I'm gonna vote no is the proximity to the school. I'm very concerned with that, so I'm voting no.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Approved four to two.
Okay. Agenda item number twenty-eight, case C seven dash twenty-four dash sixty-eight. Applicant VND Senior Omaha LLC, request approval of a conditional use permit to allow assisted living in the CC District. Property is located within an ACI area of civic importance, overlay district. Location, six fifty-five North Ninety-Eighth Avenue. Hey, Mr. Greason, you're up.
The guy you guys have been waiting for. I can't tell you. I should say that I've, my respect for you all has grown immensely today 'cause I can't remember the last time that I've sat through a whole planning board meeting. But I had item one and I've got this. Anyway, this one hopefully is a little easier than, than some of these you guys have had. This is the old Sheraton Hotel on the northwest corner.
We need your name and address.
Douglas Streason, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the old Sheraton Northwest Corner of six eighty and Dodge Street, sits up on the hill. We were here, I wanna say three, four years ago with this almost the same type application. But I think COVID derailed it and they ended up deciding to try to make another go of it as a hotel, which ended up in the same results as the prior hotels that had been up there. This is gonna provide like five different types of assisted living. We have no issues with any of the conditions. We've got an immense amount of parking, well over what's required for this use. So adding the green space will not be a problem. I know you guys have been here a long time, so I'm gonna leave it at that. If you have any questions. I've also got Jesse McConnell. This might be his first planning board meeting. I'll let him know that they don't always go like this. So anyway, thank you for your time and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Doug. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Covered, okay. Seeing none of there, any opponents? Then, okay. Close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions?
You know, really, we just didn't have this on consent 'cause Doug's been having too good of a time with his Boilermakers in the basketball season. So we said, let's bring him back down to earth a little bit. Okay. I don't think I need to get into anything. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow assisted living subject to the seven conditions.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Paige?
Can you believe you waited all this time?
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Last month's pre-meeting and public meeting minutes. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Paige?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Paige? Mr. Chair? Approved six to zero.